And so I am going to.
Yeah, she just got an email from a woman named Colin Dillingham. Looking for the link to how to participate in this hearing. Can I forward that email to you?
Yeah. Okay, is it okay? The live stream is working and now I'm, is it okay if I start the webinar? Just so we can see if anyone's in the attendee section who needs to be bumped up to panelists? Because I don't see any of the applicant people here yet.
That sounds like a good idea since it's three minutes until the start of the hearing.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do that then. So Bill Lincoln is in the attendee list.
He's one of the neighbors.
Okay. I see Mark Hinkle as an attendee.
He's also a neighbor. They may wish to speak when it's time for public comment.
Alrighty.
By my clock, I show we are at one o'clock.
My clock says that too. Thank you. I don't see our applicants yet, though.
I just noticed that Mr. Kobak shows up on my participant list.
Oh, good. I see his video as well.
Can you gentlemen hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, Aaron, should we get started?
Sure. My name is Aaron Henson, Senior Planner with the City of Ben. Welcome. We are about to start the public hearing for the Bachelor Review Road to Subdivision application. It's file P L L D two oh two two oh one one nine. And besides myself, we have a few other staff members attending today. Chris Henningson from Engineering and Jeff Bond from the Fire Department.
All right, thank you, sir. My name is Greg Frank, and I'm going to get this hearing off and rolling. I'm sorry.
Sounds like we have a background noise from someone. If you could please mute your audio. If you're not speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. As I indicated, my name is Greg Frank, and I'm a hearings officer employed by the City of Ben. To conduct the hearing on the Zoom virtual platform process on June 15th, 2022. At approximately, starting at approximately 1:00 PM. And I want to repeat a couple of things that Mr. Henson indicated earlier, and it's simply a matter of caution. This, the project number we're talking about is P L L D two zero two zero one one nine. Based on the staff report, it indicated a recommendation. It indicated that this is a tentative application for a type three. For Bachelor View two, a four-phase forty-four lot subdivision located on eight point six seven acres. In the residential standard density or RS zone. I'm going to refer to days, to the day's case as the Bachelor View two application. And you'll know why shortly. I want to talk about, to start with, what my personal understanding or information or contacts related to this case are made up of. As I indicated in an entire case, I have previously conducted hearings with Planner Henson. Who was then representing the City of Ben. I have also conducted hearings and rendered land use decisions where Attorney Kobak, the applicant's attorney. Has represented applicants. As many of you may know, in this, who are listening to my comments. I have considered and issued a land use decision and actually a reconsiderer reconsideration decision related to an application. For a subdivision approval on adjacent property, and that was P L L D two zero two one zero eight four eight. That was a subdivision application and PLM, I think it's IS C two zero two one zero nine three, which was a waiver to public improvements application. I'm going to refer to that adjacent property application decision consideration. The next door one, I'm going to refer to as Bachelor View number one. So to repeat, I'm looking, I'm going to be using Bachelor View. But I'm going to reference one for the adjacent application and two for this current application, just for consistency. And I'll repeat that a couple of times. It is my understanding that the Bachelor View one decision was appealed that I made was appealed to the Ben City Council. Ultimately to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. I do not now, I'm not aware now of the procedural or substantive status of that particular appeal. But I have a feeling that it's going to be raised throughout this decision. And I respect that, but I'm telling you what I know. And all I know is there's been appeal filed. As of those of you who participated in the Bachelor View one application hearing process. And are aware, my decision involved many legal opinions. Some of which you may agree with and some of which you may not have agreed with. It is reasonable to assume that many of the factual. Or some factual or legal issues raised in that case in the Bachelor View one case, which has been decided by me. Would be contested again during this Bachelor two hearing process. If not challenged in this hearing process, in other words, the Bachelor two view or Bachelor View two hearing process. Then I am going to consider the analysis and conclusions set forth in Bachelor View one to be controlling. However, and this is really important, however, please appreciate that anyone. In this hearing process may challenge my Bachelor View one factual conclusions or legal conclusions. You have that right. Do that by presenting in this case facts or evidence. That you believe demonstrates that I was incorrect, putting more bluntly, wrong. In one of more of my conclusions that I included in the Bachelor one hearings officer decision. So to repeat, if no one challenges with facts and or legal analysis. My conclusions in the Bachelor View one decision, then I'm going to follow those. If they are challenged and you have every right to do so, and I will consider each and every one of those arguments. Then please do so, contest what I decided in the Bachelor View one decision. I assure you that I will listen to your testimony. I assure you that I will consider all written documents in the record. When making a decision in this case. I want you to be aware that I reviewed the planning Planner Henson's staff recommendation. I, as a result of that, I am now familiar with what the City of Ben Planning Staff believes to be. The relevant approval criteria in this case. You have access to the staff recommendation by going to the City of Ben Planning and Historic Portal. Of the online permit center. And Mr. Henson, if I got that wrong, you'll correct me somewhere else along the line.
You got that right. You got that right.
But I want to make sure everyone understands, and if you don't understand where to get access to the documents in this case. Please ask me and I'll try to repeat it, but Mr. Henson is the one who is much more familiar with that process and he will help you on that. I want you to be aware that I have reviewed in a cursory manner. All of the documents submitted into the record. Until today. And so today being June 5th, I want to make note. That on June 15th, 2022, I noted that there was three. It appeared to me to be opposition emails or submissions. And there appeared to be a fairly large number of applicants submitted submissions. I did not read those in any detail, particularly because I know the applicant's representative this year. I can assure you that I did not read those documents submitted by applicant in any way, shape or form. So that I understand and appreciate everything that's in those. So I will rely on someone to point me to the appropriate. Parts of those records, or I will assure you that I read everything in the record anyway. So before the decision's rendered, I will take a look at those. I also want you to understand that prior to this hearing. That you are privy to. That Mr. Henson informed me of two procedural issues which he is going to raise. And if you have any concerns, comments, opinions. Information to share with me, please do so. Number one relates to a submission of a modification. The issue related to whether or not submissions on the fifteenth. Perhaps even the fourteenth, but at least the fifteenth constitutes a modification under the Bend Development Code four point one point four four dot five D. And the second issue he raised, giving no opinion, one way or the other, just simply raising the issue so that I was aware of it. Is that a waiver application perhaps has been filed. He will clarify that in his comments. But no fee has has been paid. And perhaps just as important as the notice of the public hearing. Did not include reference to a waiver modification. To alert the public and interested parties of that particular issue. And I'm sure Mr. Henson will make comments about that. I'm sure applicant's representatives will will comment on that. So with all of that disclosure on my part, keeping that all in mind. I'm going to tell you that I believe that I am qualified to preside over this hearing and render. An unbiased and objective decision. Under the Bend Development Code, I am required at this point to ask if anyone. Do anyone wishes to raise an issue about my bias prejudice conflicts of interest or personal interests? In this case. So I'd ask the person in charge of the hearing electronic process. To ask it or tell me if anyone has raised their hand. So if you don't want me. To be the hearings officer in this case, you need to raise your hand. We will recognize those folks who do raise their hands. And I will take your your comments at this time. So.
I do not see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, let's give them about thirty seconds.
At least on my computer to raise your hand, you need to hover over or click on the button that says more. There's three little dots. If you click on that. You then scroll down to raise hand and click on that. That probably it works a little differently if you're participating by phone. Sheila, do you remember if there's a specific number command or something that to raise your hand?
I believe on the phone it's star six or star nine if that doesn't work. And Mark Hinkle has raised his hand, so I'm going to unmute him.
Mr. Hinkle, when you're available, I'm ready to listen.
Yeah, Mr. Frank, I would like to object. I believe there were several critical material issues. Related to Bachelor View one, as you've described it, that were not addressed head on as they should have been, in my opinion. Those include. I would say the biggest one is the encumbrances that are on the road that were brought up more clearly by the city. In the city's staff recommendation this time around on Bachelor View two. But I don't, I believe there were things like that and also the well that were just sort of in my, what I would describe to be sort of punted. On as opposed to addressed head on. And so. I feel like I would, you know, and I'll just speak for myself, but if I was given, given the opportunity to voice my concerns. I would opt for a hearings officer that was, had a more thorough response prepared to those issues. Which are critical and material issues to the decision as a whole, as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle. I appreciate your comments. Anyone else raising their hands?
I don't see anyone at this time.
All right, at this point in time, I'm going to respond to Mr. Hinkle's comment. That I didn't address in Bachelor View one. Various issues or matters. In his language as thoroughly as he would have liked. And I appreciate that. Trust me, I appreciate that. Bachelor View one, quite candidly, was a very, from a legal perspective, was a pretty complex case. And I don't, you typically issue seventy-five page decisions. That one was long and I attempted to address those things as thoroughly as I could. So from a sincere perspective, I respect what you're saying and I appreciate what you're saying. If if I could possibly get everything right all the time, I probably, I'm not sure what I'd be doing, but it may not be being a hearings officer. So I do appreciate very much your comments. By the very nature of having made a decision in a prior case in and of itself does not. Disqualify me as either having biased prejudice conflicts or a personal interest in a case. As I tried very hard in my opening comments to to convey to you, Mr. Hinkle, as well as everyone else. Is that this is a new case. And if 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 I didn't use the word plead, which I didn't. I would plead with you now that if there are issues that you believed need more and thorough. Consideration, then I look to you to make sure that you fill in the blanks and give me adequate information. To so that I can make a decision based on everything that's necessary and whether or not you agree or disagree with that. Ultimate decision that I make. I look to you to help me out on that. And so the encumbrances on the road, I. Need you to help me understand why I need to do a better job on that. So I'm going, since there was no other raised hands. I am going to proceed to hear this case, but Mr. Hinkle, I respect you and your comments greatly. And I'm hopeful that I can adequately address your concerns. Right, with that in mind, then I'd like to proceed with finishing my opening comments. The hearing process will give you an opportunity to testify or present evidence. And everyone will be given an opportunity to speak at least one time. At this point in time, I'm not going to put time limits on, but I'd ask that you understand that I am not going to try to be offensive. But I may ask during an individual's testimony that is continuing for some time. I may ask that person to kind of move it along and raise some issues. In that they wish to, but do it in a considerate, in a form that's considerate. Consideration of all other parties that wish to testify. So I'm not going to. Put time limits on you. The order of presentation will be that after my opening comments, I'm going to ask Mr. Henson to give his staff comments. Following that, the applicant will give testimony, those in favor of the application, then will be given an opportunity to testify. Anyone neutral will be given an opportunity to testify. I don't see very many of those. Opposition testimony will then follow. Applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. And then the staff will be given an opportunity for final comments. Right, I used in the earlier. Comments that I made a phrase called approval criteria. Approval criteria, for those of you who are not familiar with land use cases, is simply another way to say requirements or the law. So in land use cases, I make as a hearings officer. Ultimately, city council would make as a final decision body if they consider it. They must only consider what are relevant approval criteria. Staff has set forth in the staff recommendation, what staff believes are the relevant approval criteria. You may agree or disagree with staff. That's correct. If you disagree, then tell me what the credit approval criteria are. Tell me if the staff included too many approval criteria or staff did not include one or more relevant approval criteria that you believe is important. You must tell me at this hearing if you believe the staff did those things. The burden in a land use case in the City of Ben rests upon the applicant. So just keep in mind that if we're on a teeter totter, the applicant has to push teeter totter in their direction ever so slightly. What I'm going to tell you now is something that I wish I didn't have to go through because it's a little boring. But it's actually really important. So I'm going to take four sections out of the Bend Development Code. And I'm going to read those to you. The first one comes out of Bend Development Code four point one point eight seven zero eight five C. And it says the failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient. To afford the hearings body and the parties. An opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Bend Development Code four point one eight seven zero eight six says the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions. Of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated respond to the issues precludes an action for damages to serve a court. Then develop the code four point one eight seven zero eight seven says an issue which may be the basis for appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Shall be raised no later than the close of the record or following the final evidentiary hearing on the proposal before the local government. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford city council, planning commission, hearings body or hearings officer and the parties. To an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. And finally, four point one nine, four point one eight nine zero says any objections not raised prior to the close of oral testimony or waived. Parties alleging procedural effort. Shall have the burden at luba as to whether the or whether the error occurred and whether the error has prejudiced or substantial rights. Finally, let me talk about closing of the record. If no one makes any kind of request to have either the hearing continued or the record to remain open. Then the record will be closed today. You have a right to request a continuance under Bend Development Code four point one point eight eight five. And basically a continuance is where we all come back here and have another hearing. To, we have to set a date, time, date, time and place certain. If you want the hearing continued, please clearly make such a request during your hearing testimony. If you wish the record to remain open after today's oral portion of the hearing is is closed, then any party, any person. May request during their testimony or presentation or in writing that the record remain open for the submission of additional written evidence. Please, if you want the record to remain open past today's hearing, please let me know during the hearing today. It's just very beneficial. If you were, if there is a request for a continuance and the open record are made, I will, I am given the authority to pick which one. Continuance or open record that I believe is appropriate. I will tell you that I'm generally. Continuance or open record uh that I believe is appropriate. I will tell you that I'm generally reluctant. To grant a request for continuance, but under state law must, I have no discretion, must. Grant a request. For the record to remain open. If the record remain no, remains open, in all likelihood, it would be for a seven day submission for new evidence, seven days additional evidence for responsive evidence. And finally, seven days for the applicant to submit its final argument. If a request for the record is 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 made. Then I will have plant planner Henson describe at the end of the hearing. Um, how you get information into the record. I will establish dates and time uh for the record submissions. So at this point in time, what we're going to have in the record is everything that's been submitted today. Everything that's submitted prior to the close of the record. In and your testimony today. Um, my contract with the city of Bend requires that I deliver to the city within twenty-one days of the record. Uh, any uh decision that I render, so I have twenty-one days after the records close. Two more things. One is, please, prior to your testimony, give your name and address. Secondly, if there are a fair number of people wanting to testify, and I'm not looking at it right now, it looks like. There are twenty-one participants, so I would assume that a fair number of those. Uh, people are going to want to testify today and that's their right. Uh, if those people all testify and testify for a really long time, we're here for a really long time. So my suggestion is to you is the following. If your testimony is repetitious or or is similar or the same as someone else's, then simply say, hey, I agree with so and so. Uh, and and you can just leave it at that. If your testimony differs from someone, please let me know. There's an old saying that saying something more than once does not make it any more true or any more false. So the number of people that talk is not determinative. It's the quality. Of the information, it's the quality of the testimony and the documentation. That I will consider when making my decision. So that ends my comments. I'm going to turn it now over to Mr. Henson. Mr. Henson, you have a floor for the opening for your uh comments. Following that, I would ask that the planner or the applicants represented be prepared to speak. Mr. Henson.
Um, thank you, Mr. Frank. So just briefly, the applicable standards for this um subdivision application. Are found in chapter four point three of the Ben Development Code. That's the um land division chapter. The applicable standards are found in um several chapters, starting with chapter two point one, the residential districts chapter. Three point one, which is the chapter that covers lot parcel and block design and access and circulation. Chapter three point two has some standards pertaining to things like um street trees. Uh, chapter three point four, public improvement standards is another very important. Um, chapter dealing with the street and water and sewer improvements for subdivisions. Chapter three point five has a few other design standards, kind of a miscellaneous chapter. Four point seven is the chapter that deals with transportation analysis and. The what's required in the way of traffic studies for subdivisions. And kind of overriding all is um. The applicable procedures are found in chapter four point one of the Ben Development Code. So um. The um. Next slide here is a vicinity map showing the subject property, so. On west side of town, um. Near the city limits, um south of Century Drive, across from Tethero and south of the lodges at Bachelor View subdivision. To the east um is a um subdivision called Sunrise Village. And most of the other surrounding properties to the south and west are um large parcels. That are either uh have a single family home on them or or a few that are still vacant. So um. The um. Just a little bit of background on this application. Um, this application uh came in. In about, I think we were still uh under review at Bachelor View one, the. Application came in on February eighteenth uh twenty twenty-two, and as I recall, the hearing on Bachelor View one was on February first. Twenty twenty-two and uh the record was extended and. It took a while before we had a final local decision, but. So there's, there was some overlap. Um, when. But this application for Bachelor View two came in, it was initially a. For a two-phase thirty-four lot subdivision. Um, and that application was deemed incomplete. Um, when the applicant came back uh and submitted. Um, most of the items that were missing, um, the project was changed to a forty-four lot subdivision. Yeah, with four phases, so uh ten more lots than uh initially proposed. So that you'll, if people read through the record, um there, that might um help to clear up some of the confusion. So um. The uh. Like I said, in in May uh twenty twenty-two. Uh, the applicant submitted a revised burden of proof for a forty-four lot subdivision together with an updated. Uh, phasing plan and updated utility plan, updated grading and drainage plan. Um, and a shadow plat showing how the surrounding properties uh might be developed in the future. Um, a um uh copy of the traffic analysis memo. From our engineering division in response to the um. What the applicant had originally submitted in the way of a transportation facilities report. The applicant also submitted an updated transportation facilities report and. That our engineering division did not um. Did not uh go through the formal process of um responding to um. Or issuing an updated transportation analysis memo in response to that. Um, the updated plans and supporting documents did not address. Um, the staff's concern that the proposed subdivision needs a loop water main. In order to meet the fire flow requirements of the project. And um. Uh, I'll touch on that uh later as we've received some new information uh just today about that issue. Uh, so on May third, twenty twenty-two, the applicant sent an email to staff saying uh essentially that. They've up, they had uploaded everything that they're going to provide. And under state law, there uh they can ask the city to start their hundred and twenty day review process. And deem the application complete, um which is what we did and um. We informed the applicant that the city um will take final action on this application, including resolution of any. Uh, appeals by the end of August of this year. Um, as of the public hearing today, there are seventy-seven days remaining in the hundred and twenty day review period. Um, so a- and also of uh May fifth, we informed the applicant that we. Would um be elevating this to review by hearings officer. And the um applicant provided the required um deposit. So um that's just a little background. Um, here's the aerial photo of the site. Um. Bachelor View one uh is directly north uh and this site. Um, is has much fewer trees on it. It has um a few trees along um the north edge um. And Bachelor View Road uh. Follows the western boundary of Bachelor View two, just as it did uh for Bachelor View one. And there is a spur in the road um that uh you can see in this aerial photo. At the south end um and uh um. That is a section where because the um. The property owner um. The road passes uh through the site instead of only along the edge of the site. The uh proposal is to dedicate sixty feet of right of way there um. The uh as I'll show in the tentative plan next, the uh proposal is to dedicate forty feet of right of way um. Along the west side. So uh in this um map, north is pointing to the left. And you can see that um there's a proposal to extend not only Bachelor View Road, but B Street. Um, which is a street that would be constructed as part of the Bachelor View one. Uh subdivision and that would extend south and then tie back into Bachelor View Road. In phase four um. And um the uh the phasing as proposed is essentially north to south with uh phase one. Uh, including the uh first twelve lots and then um roughly the same number of lots. Um, in phase two with C Street connecting back to Bachelor View. Um, phase three being uh at least an area of the biggest phase. Some again similar number of lots. Phase four um containing only three lots, um one of which is on. Uh, the west side of the proposed road improvements. Um. Like the previous application, the uh developers proposing uh what we call a half street. Um, it this is, uh it's a again an unusual um. Configuration in that it abuts the remaining remaining portion of a um. Uh, of a private road. Uh, in this figure, you can see that the saw cut line um. Is twenty-four feet from the curb uh would be installed. And then the remaining uh. Uh, access easements uh fifteen feet wide. Would have uh two to twelve feet of um private road asphalt. Um, leftover from what's out there now um for a total width of. Twenty-six to thirty-six feet. So fairly uh wide range in variability in terms of width. And um in that. Um, easternmost part again is would be um. A private uh portion of the road. There is no public access easement over the portion of the road that would. The west of the saw cut line. So the the burden of proof that we received did identify that the again a waiver was needed. Um, uh, this is just a s- a couple slides listing the criteria for a waiver, the submitted burden of proof. Um, points to subsection B ten um asserting that um. This waiver should be approved because there's no street or right of way adjacent to the property. And easement access has been obtained across private property. Um, I I think this this section was intended. Um. That this easement across private property would be like a public access easement where a neighboring property isn't. Ready to build their half of the road yet, but is willing to um uh provide an easement over there. Um, adjacent budding property to. Um, make way for the um necessary road improvements. Um, there, this is not an entirely clear section of our code. Um, and as you pointed out in Bachelor View one. Um, when we reviewed an application for needed housing and needed housing is defined very broadly. Um, as any housing that is needed to meet our housing. Uh, needs is in de- identified in uh the city's housing needs analysis. Um. The our review has to be based on clear and objective standards, so um. You went through a very thorough analysis of the waiver criteria last time around to. Determine what was and was not clear and objective. Um. I'll be honest, I'm not sure I s- I even understand it fully myself. It's uh complicated for sure. But um, that's uh B ten is the criteria which the burden of proof points to as being the the um. Condition that is met um that should allow the waiver to be granted. Um. As I mentioned at the outset, um, the uh cr- uh subsection D of the waiver section. Says that an application for a waiver shall be in writing and part of the development application. Um, the burden of proof that was submitted did uh si- uh state that a waiver was requested. Um, but uh this contin- section continues on to say the city council may adopt a fee and um. Uh, et cetera, and so. Um, because the applicant um. Asked us to start this application review and start the hundred and twenty day clock. Before we had everything, that's, you know, it's we're required to do that under state law. But one one of the things that we didn't have uh was an app, a a separate application for a waiver and the waiver fee adopted by council. Yesterday, a waiver application was submitted to our online permit center. Um, and we haven't begun review of that. Uh, because the fee hasn't been paid as of uh last I checked li- uh earlier today. Um, so that kind of circles back to the question um. That um uh along with the uh fifteen items that were uh submitted. Into the record um today, uh some of which were emailed to me uh last night after the close of business, but. Um, they were all uploaded by the hearing today. Do, essentially, the question is, uh, do any of those constitute a modification of application? And I raise this just um. Uh. Mostly to make sure that we don't make any procedural errors here. Um, the none of the information, as far as I can see, that was uh uploaded today. Changes the layout of the subdivision or uh the design of the subdivision or anything like that. Um, if there's uh any new information that um. Might be can potentially considered a modification of approval or modification of uh the application is the new information that we have received. Um, from the applicant's engineer on the availability uh on the fire flow analysis. Basically, the uh the initial application um based on the the. Review that was provided by our engineering division. Found that the um water supply at the higher highest kind of highest points of this subdivision. Um. Would be uh less than what's required. And uh today, we re- about an hour before the hearing. We received a memo from the applicant's engineer. Um, indicating that they've they found fault with the city's review. And that um in fact, they believe that the uh fire flow is adequate, so. Um. Is that a modification or is that um merely clarifying um? The application, uh it's um maybe a a little bit gray there. So um the code um talks about how um. The um. Uh, up up until the day of a hearing. That the it's up to uh city, the city staff basically to determine whether an applicant's submittal constitutes a modification. After such time, the, in this case, the hearings officer must make that determination. So um those were those two procedural issues. Um, we can stop and talk about those now or I can. Um, go back to my PowerPoint slides and continue on.
Mr. Hanson, let's just proceed. Um, I'd like to hear both sides and I will give you ample opportunity and it which includes if you wish to have. Uh, city attorneys, city engineers, whoever uh assists you uh at the end of the hearing during. Uh, at the end of the hearing during your final comment, so I will give you every opportunity to discuss that.
Okay, thank you. I'll proceed then. Um, so, um. Our fire department looked at the submittal, um. They, they did not have time to review the information that just came in, um, to the record today, but. Um, based on their review of what had been submitted. They, uh, were concerned with a couple of, uh, fire code requirements. One is that, um, there's a fire code that says that, um. Residential developments of one and two family dwellings, which, um. That's, uh, essentially what's proposed here is, uh, although Houseville two thousand and one. Uh, raises some concerns in terms of, um. What these lots might actually be developed with in the future, but, um, based upon, um. The traffic study and water and sewer studies that were done based on, uh, the applicant's, uh. Proposal for, uh, uh, one and two family dwellings. There is a fire code requirement that says those developments, if there's thirty. If the number of dwelling units exceeds thirty, that there is a requirement for separate and approved fire apparatus access roads. Basically, two ways in and out. And, um, our fire department, um, noted that, you know, this project is, uh, more than thirty dwelling units and only. Uh, Bachelor View Road really provides the only one way in and out, and so, um, that, uh. It's a concern, um, the second was the fire flow issue, um. Uh, perhaps the new evidence, uh. Uh, can show that the fire flow is adequate now. Um. Our fire department may have some further comments on that, it's my understanding that, um. Uh, if the modeling is, uh, is good now, that's great, um, but there would still need to be. Uh, fire flow testing done once the hydrants are installed, um, and if for some reason. Once, uh, the actual fire flow field tests are performed, if, uh, if the water. Flow was not, um, sufficient, there, then they would ha- uh, have to look at, um. The uniform alternate construction standard, um. Basically, that my understanding, uh, i- in that situation is there, there can be ways to address. Insufficient fire flow, um, for instance, uh, providing residential fire sprinkler systems in homes. It's a, it's an item that adds cost but does increase safety and, um, extends the time within which. The fire department can respond to a fire emergency. I've been a planner for, um, the city of Ben for about nineteen years and, uh. In all that time, I, I can only recall one subdivision where, um, it, it was approved, um. Uh, knowing that the fire flow was inadequate, um. It was in the Avion Water Service Area and, um, it was made of a, a condition of approval that the homes. Um, install a, uh, fire sprinkler system and. Later on, um, Avion was able to improve its water flow to that, um, subdivision. And, uh, so the developer circled back and was able to delete that condition from. Um, the, the land use requirements for development, um, after that point. So it's, um, rare, but, um. That is one way that, uh, sometimes developments can, um. Address the fire code without, um, adequate fire flow. So, um, the, uh, a- and again, this was, th- this screen shows the water analysis results, um. That, uh, were of concern, um, but there is new information in the record that I'm sure we'll hear from the applicants about today. Um, but again, uh, this, if the water flow issue is, uh, is resolved, there's still. The issue of, um, whether to, um, access, um, separate approved access. Points can be provided. Um, jumping to the chase, I'm sorry if I took too long, but the staff recommendation, um, is. To deny this application, um, uh, for the, mostly for these bullet points here. Um, the, um, the project does not have two separate and improved fire apparatus access roads and it, there's. It's a subdivision for one and two family dwellings that exceeds thirty dwelling units, um. Fire flow, uh, at least up until the day did not appear to have been, uh, met or. Uh, no feasible way to, to meet. The waiver to public improvement standards application that just came in yesterday and, uh. To the best of my knowledge, the fees had not been paid as of, uh, right before this hearing, um. So that's a procedural issue potentially, uh, because we didn't notice that to the surrounding property owners and there. May or may not be something that we need to do, uh, to cure that if you find that, um, that that is. Uh, an item of concern here. The. Um. The next bullet is, uh, kind of gl- glossed over this, but the, this property. It doesn't have access to city water, sewer, or public right of way today, it, it's. Um, until Bachelor View one is completed, um, those, uh, items are. Are not accessible, um, I, in my staff report, I said something like, you know, um. Ideally, the Luba, uh, case would be resolved if we're deciding this one and, uh, and maybe I. Um, that was a, you know, stepping a little too far, there, um. Uh, our city attorney. Uh, mentioned to me that, well, maybe this is a, this subdivision could be approved conditionally upon. The, um, the completion of all three phases of Bachelor View one. Um, I just wonder if, you know, how long is it going to take for Bachelor View one to be developed? Um, it was approved as a phase subdivision, so it could take five years, um. And, uh, that's assuming that, um, the, uh, there's no remand and no, no. You know, things aren't, don't get drug out further, um, and so that's quite a bit, a bit of time, um. This current application is a, another, also a phase subdivision, um. Uh, so anyway, it just, there's a concern about, um, whether this application is, is really, uh. Premature or, or, or timely, or if it, um. If there's a way to, uh, condition it upon completion of Bachelor View one. The, um. The last bullet here has to do with the, the issue of. Uh, our final plat approval criteria, um, in our land division ordinance. Requires all streets and roads for public use to be dedicated to the public without any reservation or restriction. No, no encumbrances will be permitted and, um. Sometimes that's like, you know, there's, uh, easements for power or for natural gas or, um. In this case, uh, our concern is mostly the, um, existing private access easement that runs under. The portion of roadway, the forty foot to sixty foot of right of way that, um, the applicant proposes to dedicate here. Um, the beneficiaries of those private easements have, um, have not indicated their willingness to. Uh, release those easements, um, and they've not, you know, sign a. Authorization forms for, um, authorizing this project to, um. Develop a roadway over, um, the, either the portion that the applicant's own or. Uh, or use the portion to the west. Um, that's part of their, this roadway, um, that the subdivision will, will use with their authorization, um. The applicants have submitted some new stuff in the record, which I took a look at, I, I, in this, um. It's not, I think it's all stuff that was submitted into the Bachelor View one record, um. They point out that in, um, the lodges at Bachelor View, phase one and two. Um, that the, uh, the public road, Bachelor View Road that. Replace the old, um, private road. The plat, um, references the, um, that there were, um, private access easements in that. Um, the new public road, um, was completely, um. In- included all, all those and ran right over the top of it and that the city accepted that dedication, um. And I would just note on that, that, you know, that the lodges at Bachelor View was able to dedicate both sides of the road, um. I think the, uh, the west side of, uh, the road in those subdivisions. May have been done by separate deed of dedication rather than with the plat, but bottom line is, um. That is, that's, that's a different situation, we don't have, uh, where Bachelor Road passes. By the, the lodges that Bachelor View. We don't have a road that's half public, half private, so it still remains a concern. To staff and to all the neighbors in terms of, um, liability issues and, and road maintenance issues and, uh, a whole host of things. Um, I didn't put a bullet here on the slide, but, um. The stormwater issues, um. Are very, very similar with this application versus Bachelor View one, um, as you, um. Probably recall, the, um, staff, um, our engineering division. Um, asserted that dry wells should not be allowed within five hundred feet. Of a well and pointed to DEQ regulations and to the central organ stormwater manual. Um, but, um, like last time. The applicant has provided a copy of, uh, study that was done, um, in support of the. City's own water pollution control facility permit, um, that, um. Uh, supposedly puts that issue to rest, um, and, uh. What puts that issue to rest, according to that study, is that the depth to groundwater is very deep through here and that. Um, a- any contaminants that would, um, reach out from the, from any new, um. Dry wells would, uh, would not make it, um, all the way down to the aquifer, so. Um, I didn't put a bullet point in there, uh, our engineering staff may have more comments on that. I'll wrap up now, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Uh, Mr. Hanson, anyone else at this point in time wanting to testify on behalf of the city?
Yeah, this is, uh, Chris Hennington, um, in city engineering department. Um, want to touch base on, I guess, a couple of things here in, in Aaron's slide. Uh, first, uh, the fire flow analysis is actually, per the design standards, is actually fifteen hundred gallons per minute, not a thousand. So that puts them shy of, of meeting the fire flow requirements by five hundred gallons per minute. Um, the staff did, um, identify a solution, however, we cannot make it a, a. Uh, a condition, obviously, because it requires coordination with adjacent properties that are not part of the record. Um. Going to, uh, the, the, the fire code and, and maybe the fire department will, will chime in here. Um, touching base on the, um, thirty dwellings, uh, without a second access point. I would like to point out the fact that right now there's currently twenty, uh, approximately twenty-nine homes. In this subdivision with this dead end street. Uh, under the previous, uh, subdivision approval, we add an additional twenty-six homes. And with this subdivision, we're adding an additional forty-four homes, so we're just propagating an additional problem. Um, not only do we have lack of fire flow, but we have no access. Um. Other than that, uh, I, I think Aaron did a, a pretty good job pointing at all of the other. Uh, items that are, that are, um, relevant to, to this particular, uh, development. Um, like to point out that some of the, the conceptual utilities that they're identifying. As for, for storm water, um, don't meet city standard because separation requirements are not met in order for the city to obtain. Clearances to, to excavate those systems in the event of a failure. Um, and, um, to touch on Aaron's point, um, the, the reason why the city has a code. On the UIC requirements and separation from, from, um, wells. Is, is, yeah, it may not get to the aquifers, but you may have lateral movement of those waters and with those. Uh, domestic wells, uh, adjacent to this subdivision and very, very close, may I, uh, remind you. Um, you, you do have the, the, the potential of the, the migration of those, that dirty water from those UICs into the ground that. Uh, will affect those, those, uh, those wells, um. As Aaron had indicated, we have not had the opportunity to review the, the, uh, waiver to public improvement standards. Um, I have not had the ability to, to review whatever some country has provided us that, that. Um, identifies an issue with the fire flow analysis, um, but I do, um. Like to point out that five point six of the Ben design standards does indicate. That no other analysis for fire flow can be substituted for the analysis performed by the city using its calibrated hydraulic manual. So, um, that's all I have for you, um. If there's any questions, I'll be available, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sir Henningson, um, just, just sort of a logistical issue, you planning to stay around till the end of the hearing?
I will.
Okay, if that's the case, then I'm gonna, I ha- I do have some questions. Uh, probably more pointed comments than anything else, just to try to incite. Uh, folks to give me the best possible information that, that's, uh, available. So, uh, stick around if you would please, and I, I probably will be calling on you to, uh, respond. Or at least acknowledge what I have to say, um, it's not that I'm disagreeing with anything, I just want to make sure. Uh, that you have an opportunity to respond to me, so with, uh, and Mr. Hanson, anyone else on behalf of the city?
Um, only if, um, Jeff has anything, Jeff Bond from the fire department.
Mr. Bond, are you going to testify on behalf of the city?
I think they've covered everything very thoroughly, uh, nothing, nothing in addition.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Um, alright, I'm, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry.
I'll just, I'll be available for, for any questions.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you, and like I said, I'm sorry if I interrupted. Um, this will be the time and the place then for the applicants representative, please, as I indicated earlier. Uh, I'm, I'm making an assumption if I'm incorrect, that all city representatives have, have basically the same general address, uh, that. Any notices or decisions or whatever will go to them, if not, uh, would you make sure you put into the record a correct address from here on out? Including the applicant, applicant's representative or anyone else testifying, I need your name and address before, uh, we proceed to your formal testimony. So applicant or applicant's representative.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Frank, Christopher Kobak, K O B A C K, uh, the, the address is one, one, two, five, northwest Cooch. That's in Portland, and it's still nine, seven, two, oh, nine. The street address is new and that's suite five fifty, by the way, that's a new, a new address, so hopefully the, the city will get that as well. Um, I'm here representing the applicant, BLCLLC, um, uh, the applicant. Uh, their representatives are on the line, uh, Tim Wiseup from Sun Country, the project engineers on the line, uh, as well. Um. This is a little bit like the saying, I think it was Yogi Berra or some other famous person said, it's deja vu all over again. Uh, this is substantially similar to the application you decided previously, as you noted. The big, really the only, uh, difference, I think, of substances, that's forty-four. The big, really the only uh, difference, I think, of substances is this forty-four lots. Uh, as opposed to twenty-six, and as staff noted, I think there's literally one. Issue that the increase in lots really impacts, and we're going to talk about that, and that's the the fire. Uh, flow and the fire access. Um, and so, uh, other than that. Uh, the the application is a single-family dwelling subdivision on land zoned for that use. Um, you, you, you look at the criteria, it's in four point three, three hundred, and this is just kind of an overview. Uh, to explain what I'm going to talk about, what I'm not going to talk about. Now, that's the subdivision criteria, and and there's a couple that staff raised issues under. But the biggest one is four point three, three hundred E three, I think, which is. It says that the subdivision has to be consistent or comply with all of the other regulations in the code. And I say that because that's the one uh, provision where I think the hearings officer had to get into all of the technical legal. Analysis under ORS one nine seven three oh seven, the needed housing statute, and assess whether requirements. Uh, uh, imposed on this application were clear and objective. And of course, if they aren't clear and objective, but rather subjective uh, uh, criteria. Under the state law, they cannot form the basis for a denial. Um, I'm not planning to talk as much in detail about the clear and objective issue in this application because. But for a few issues. Uh, that was handled because staff doesn't assert that the provisions are clear and objective. In other words, we don't really disagree, I think, on most of the criteria that fall under. Four point three, three hundred three, when you go through the code and you look at section or chapter two on residential development. Chapter three point one, three point two. The way we handled it and the burden was to to maybe mention if we thought they were clear and objective, but then to insert that we comply anyway. And and I think it's largely because of the way we handled it, but that issue seems to have less prominence in this application as it did in the last one. Uh, we will talk about those, those limited instances where. Uh, we believe the clear and objective criteria needs to be uh, addressed. Uh, and other than that, unless you have specific criteria that you question, our position on, we will not get into it in any detail. Uh, so as far as that, the handful of issues that the staff has raised. Uh, we think there's a couple that really were predominantly, uh, if not completely resolved in the last decision. And I I appreciate that everybody has the opportunity and should raise any objections they have to that, uh, because this is a different proceeding. But we do believe that for, you know, the sake of brevity, uh, some of these issues have been decided. And and staff is not really, even in the report, didn't do anything to to challenge or raise issues new. Over and above what you you found previously, and the two main issues that I I'm talking about on that are stormwater and the UICs. And and the waiver. I'll first talk about the UICs a little bit, and then I'll get into it uh, in more detail, but. You found that that the the uh, the UICs are approvable within five hundred feet. Under the DEQ rule authorization process. And we explained in detail how that works and how we believe the city applied it in the adjacent subdivision and the lodges. And you can agree with us that of the two possibilities, either they gave that developer different treatment or ignored the law there. Or the rule, or they complied with the rule there and we were able to comply with it. You went with the second one. And we think that's the right and reasonable uh, uh, way to go. Um, but we have put in the record, now talk about a little bit more, a specific certification that complies completely with DEQ. Requirements and establishes the level of protectiveness for those wells consistent with Ben's programmatic approach. Uh, which was, which was adopted after they did the two thousand eleven study. So we don't think staff has done anything that calls into question your prior decision on that issue. Uh, and the waiver of street improvements, uh, we, this has happened just the same in the other one. It's. It's not part of the subdivision criteria, it's a separate request. Uh, we, we asserted the right to the waiver, or there, we believe we had the right to the waiver in the burden of proof. It was never a surprise to anybody. Uh, staff pointed it out in the staff report, and I I know they pointed it out late last time. We did file an application. On the fee, all I can tell you is, I I was here in in band yesterday, and I understood there was a check. Being delivered to the city to pay it, because the city told us we had to pay it. Um, and we'll look into that. That was the last information I had, is that the the check had been paid. And we looked at it more as, you know, like last time, we had to check that box because we raised it in the burden of proof. There was no surprise to anybody. I don't believe it was in the notice of the last one either, because it it wasn't specific, we did it the same way last time. Um, but anyway, on the substance of the waiver, you know, the last time was a little more complicated. You know, staff mentioned in this, in the staff report that. Uh, on on the waiver, one of the concerns was there was an appeal pending on a substantially similar decision on a substantially similar waiver. And I I have to take a little issue with that, because in in the prior one, if you recall. We couldn't dedicate forty feet uh, the whole way. You know, and and that's important because in Mr. Henningson had said at that hearing. Well, it's pretty common for us to accept forty feet of dedication and. What he calls half-street improvements, which are half of the standard full fifty-foot dedicated streets. When the applicant can't get the remaining dedication, a- and his concern. And and it was, you know, uh, we're at, we're at casting stones at his concern, but but his concern was. That we could only do thirty feet in one area, and that required us to seek waivers to a couple different things because of that, what we called the pinch point. We had to uh, uh, propose a very, a a little bit narrower profile for the public improvements, which required. A curb tight sidewalk instead of one that had a planter strip for, I'm thinking, I'm recalling about a hundred and fifteen feet. And we had to request a modification to uh, a street speed design because of horizontal curve that was created by the same. Underlying factors that created this pinch point. And we had to request a waiver to a sewer alignment because of that alignment that we had no control over. And so there were a lot of, I I would say there were a lot more moving parts in that waiver. Now here. In contrast, you know, we're, we've demonstrated the ability to dedicate at least forty feet, the entire length. That the development fronts Bachelor View. Uh, as you get down to the south, there's a route, there's actually an area where. The applicant is able to dedicate the full sixty feet and is proposing full improvements on that section. Um, so we're only seeking really one waiver, and that is. The waiver that Mr. Henningson said the city approves regularly, which is, we want to dedicate forty feet where we can. And we want to build standard half-street improvements. We're not asking for any exceptions. They will have the twenty. Whatever the minimum required pavement is, it will have the curb, it'll have the planter strip that's required, the whole length. And it'll have um. It'll have the uh, sidewalk the whole way. And so, when you look at your decision on the waiver in the last case, and you found, you know, the. The public benefit, which which you then translated into not having to get into whether it's harmful. You found because it was a wider street, uh, publicly maintained with sidewalks and planter strips. Even with the the hundred and fifteen foot exception, you found that that was in the general public benefit. And we've improved it, so we believe that is a very informative part of your decision, one that should be adhered to here. Uh, we haven't seen any specific reasons presented by staff that there is any less benefit from having. Full half-street improvements rather than only part of them. Um, and we don't have to do anything with the sewer, so we're gonna be, can be right in the middle, so. That's the two issue, those are the two issues we think that were um, decided in the first case, which really do. Should be adhered to and influence the decision on the same issues in this case. Now. Getting to the core issues that staff raised as the recommendation for uh, denial. I appreciate staff's final comment about the appeal at Luba. And on the staff report, uh, uh, staff raised. This issue of this pending appeal on a couple of different points. One was on the waiver, uh, one was on the sewer under four point three, three hundred E twelve. And one was on the provision in the BDC about extension of services. And uh, the the appeal really, we think, is not relevant to the decision. It's a fact, it's out there, but but it's not an approval criteria, and as we know under the law. That's a final decision, in in less than until somebody gets a stay from Luba. That is a final decision, and under Oregon law, we could pull permits. An applicant that's got a final permit, even during a Luba appeal, you at your own risk are entitled to go develop that project. Now, would somebody do it? That's a different question, but under the law. I think for this, this application and this decision, we believe you must assume that that is a final land use decision. And and ignore the fact that there is an appeal. Now, I, we appreciate staff's concern about timing. Uh, this is a phase development, and there are time limits that the city has for recording plaits for the subsequent phases. But a condition of approval that requires us to complete the infrastructure in Bachelor View One. By the way, that's how we call them too, Bachelor View One, Bachelor View Two. Um, uh, that just places the risk on the developer. And that's the whole purpose behind that. It the 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 fact that it's a final decision and we can go forward, we have to accept the risk. Of that time, and so if the condition is that we have to get that infrastructure in before we can record a final plat for Bachelor View Two. Well, that just means that two-year time to get that final plat recorded in the first phase, and then then the subsequent timeframes for the other one. That's the risk the developer has to take, and we're telling you, we're willing to take that risk. And a condition would be reasonable and feasible. There's no evidence in the record. That the applicant on Bachelor View One cannot complete those improvements in time. To record a plat in Bachelor View Two if you approve this application. So that's how we believe that should be decided. I'm going to circle back on uh, on stormwater because it's next on my list, and I'm just gonna. Explain a little bit more and enhance a little bit more what I said before by referring to some exhibits. We, we have for your information, again, we put in exhibit three, which is the well map, and that kind of just. Reinforces what we went through last time about how the city has followed the programmatic. DEQ rule authorization process to approve UICs within five hundred feet of wells in the past, very close. Uh, exhibit four isn't, is this the exhibit, it's the two thousand eleven technical memorandum that the city obtained. For purposes of submitting its program to the DEQ. And then the DEQ fact sheet is exhibit five, and that's really kind of where I think the rubber hits the road on this one, because that has the table. Where the state shows that it it received the technical memo from Ben and what that memo established. It established that. You have to demonstrate, to show protectiveness of these wells, you have to demonstrate. Uh, either vertical separation or horizontal separation that DQ approves, uh, based on your study. And you don't have to do both, and so in this case, what Ben did in the two thousand eleven study, it's long. And you you probably read it once and you'll, I'm sure you'll read it again, but. Bandalot adopted the vertical approach, and so their study showed that. Of all the pollutants that that are conceivable in a UIC. The, the, the ones that DQ is concerned about will attenuate to an acceptable level, five feet below a UIC. And then the memo goes on to show how deep the the well, the wells in the the groundwater are in Ben. And and they're hundreds of feet deep, so that's how Ben established that it was, it it's able to approve UICs. Under this rule authorization program that DQ has. And then the new exhibit we put in, just to kind of button this down, was exhibit six. And and we had our engineer confirm what DQ and the fact sheet, exhibit five requires. You know, there's a certain, it even gives you the language in italics in that exhibit to exhibit five, what you have to certify. To qualify for protectiveness. You have to show that you're in the same geological formation. You have to show that the the vertical separation is consistent with the the findings of that report, five feet, and you have to show the the depth of the groundwater. And so, uh, our engineer, Mr. Wiseup, did that, and and the there's. The groundwater is at least three hundred and ninety feet, I think, below the surface and the UIC separation requirement is five feet. So we, we think that's what really, I think, Mr. Henson said puts it to rest. We think tho- those series of exhibits culminating with exhibit six, that puts that issue to rest. Um, the next issue I want to talk about is this dedication issue. Uh, it it's a pretty, it's a pretty interesting issue for the city to have raised at this point in time. Uh, it it wasn't raised last time, and first comment I have about it is, you know, that's not even a criteria for a tentative plat approval. That's a, that's approval criteria for a final plat approval, and we haven't applied for one yet. So, the first point I want to make is, that's not even criteria you can consider, and you know, you cautioned everybody as you do well in every hearing I've been in front of you. On is, you, you, there's criteria, and you can only make decisions based on the criteria that are applicable to this application. That is not criteria that is applicable to this application. But there is, there's more to that story, because what staff is really saying, they're. And I should say, they're saying that we don't think they can meet that condition up for final plat approval. Well, that's really premature. Because final plat approval could be six months, a year, et cetera. Staff is really speculating that even if they're right about needing to extinguish easements or do other things, they're really speculating that we can't do it. And that's not substantial evidence in the record to prove anything. So even if you were to consider that criteria, staff hasn't given you any substantial evidence that you could use to go the way staff wants you to go. But really, the most important thing about it is, this is a position that legally I do not think the city can assert. Because what we've put in the record in exhibits seven, eight, nine. They're really critical from a legal standpoint. So this easement goes all the way down, right? The easement goes past. And it benefits the two properties that are the subject of the applications in in uh, BV one and BV two. And so, Mr. Helm and his trust own the property in Bachelor View One, and Mr. Darrow is the owner. Of the application, of the property in this application. They both benefit from that easement. The staff's position is. That easement is somehow a restriction or reservation that can't be in place to accept the dedication. But that same easement was there when the, in two thousand seventeen. The city accepted the dedication deed for half of the street at the lodges. And it's, if you, if you read that exhibit, um, it specifically says. In the legal description of the dedication deed, that it's, it's the, it's accept. It's subject to the same fifteen-foot wide road easement. So, in two thousand seventeen, the city's position was that that easement was not a restriction or reservation. That complicated dedication. Now, in Bachelor View One. Arriving in the lodges, Phase One, the second half was dedicated on the plat, and that's the next exhibit. Eight. Same thing. The easement was there, the city accepted the dedication over the plat. Now that, that plat. Was approved by both the city planning director and the city engineer. And then exhibit nine is the plat for Bachelor, or for the lodges too. And and that plat is even more expressed because there's specific language on it. On the first page, it says. The look, it it lists the easement, it says the location of said easement will fall completely within the dedicated right-of-way. Along Bachelor View Road. Again, Colin Stevens, who's the planning director and the city engineer. On page one of that plat, they signed off on it, and I'm guessing that the city engine, city attorney probably had some role in this too, so. I guess our point is, this is the argument that you commented, some people make, and in the last decision you commented, that you're not always. Overwhelmed by the argument that, hey, they got away with it, we should get away with it. That is not our argument here. Our point is that these documents, these recorded official documents demonstrate that as a matter of law. The city accepts dedications over easements, and they are not restrictions or reservations that violate. The chap four point three point four hundred F that the staff now claims it would violate. And the other way to look at it is, if staff's position now is accepted and and that you cannot dedicate. Property over an existing easement unless the underlying owners, my Mr. Darwin, Mr. Helm, agree to extinguish it. Well, then, wouldn't they have a claim against the city to declare the prior dedication invalid? Because. I can tell you, there's no evidence that the city can provide to you that they ever got their Mr. Darrow and Mr. Helm's consent. To dedicate over their easement rights, and they benefit from the same easements that are underlying the dedication at. And they benefit from the same easements that are underlying the dedication at the lodges. And easement runs all the way to benefit their property. We established that on Bachelor View One. So, our position is, there is basically judicial estoppel. Or the equivalent of judicial estoppel, the city cannot take back its position on the dedication or right-of-way without. Risking some serious legal complications and potential liability for having done it before. Now, there's a couple of other issues that, uh, staff raised, uh, one is, um. They believe there has to be a, a, an, a public easement over the other side of Bachelor View Road. Well, the section they recite, if you read it carefully, it's, uh. Two, three point four two hundred D, creation of vehicular access. Now, if you read that carefully, that section really says, if you as an applicant are proposing. A private street that to meet block length requirements. The city can make you put it in a public easement. Right? There's a couple of problems in staff's use of that in this application. One, we are not proposing a private street at all. We're proposing to dedicate, completely dedicate a public street that's wider than what's there. The second is, the staff has agreed, we don't need, even if we were dedicating or proposing a private street, we don't need one for block length. When they were applying the block length standards from Sec BDC three point one, two or three hundred. They specifically said we're exempt. Because in, the, the block length is a product of existing development patterns and, and limitations that were there before we got it. So. That, that. Issue is, we think that's a non-issue. We're not proposing the easement and, and there's no, there's no basis to require a. Public easement over the second, the western portion of Bachelor View. They claim that all easements must be extinguished. Uh, uh, that's under three point four two hundred C. Again, that position legally cannot stand given what positions they formally took in recorded documents. From two thousand seventeen forward. So I want to talk a little bit about, uh, the waiver again, uh, we, we. We believe we've satisfied all of the requirements that you can apply. You've already found the public benefit is there and, and found you didn't need to go for pu- public harm. There is no ability to dedicate the right-of-way on the other side. Um, there, there, you know, whether, whether Section Ten was cited in the burden proof or, or, or something else was. The evidence before you, the irrefutable evidence is Subparagraph Nine applies to. There's evidence that that applies because there is no ability to dedicate the second half of the right-of-way. That was conceded in the first one hearing on Bachelor View One, it remains a fact. So, that issue we think has been resolved and, and, and there's, there, there's no evidence to suggest. That a waiver would not be approvable in this case. We'll wrangle with the, the payment issue, uh, but, but that's. That we think is resolved. Now. On capacity, this is the issue where water comes in. And I want to start by talking about the procedural issue on water. I don't think there's any way you can read our information that was submitted. So we get the staff report seven days in advance. A- a- and that's statutory and everybody i- from the city staff and the hearings officer are aware of that, that rule. Well, then we have to deal with these issues that staff raised. And so we did an analysis of water flow. The slide that was just up. Showed that the requirement was a thousand gallons per minute. The staff report says we have to do a thousand gallons per minute. But I heard somebody say the requirement is really fifteen hundred. I, I've never seen that before. So I don't know where that came from. We've been operating under what the written representations of staff were and the citation staff made to the fire code. It's a thousand gallons per minute. So when we got the staff report, the, our engineers went through this and Tim Weisup can talk about it. He's got a detailed memo in there. They did their own modeling because something didn't seem right. First of all, there was an error in, in the reference to the, one of the hydrants that the city used in their analysis, but, but. It, it just didn't seem right that you'd go from twenty-six hundred gallons per minute at a hydrant in Bachelor View One. And then you'd go down to nine hundred and sixty-six, a short distance away. And so, the, the memo, uh, that, I think it's Exhibit Ten. That, uh, Sun Country did, just goes through and they did their own modeling using accepted engineering practices and they concluded that with no changes. There's over eleven hundred gallons per minute in one and, and, and I think close to that in, at the other height. So throughout the whole development, it's over a thousand. So, on capacity for water, w- w- we believe that evidence should be, it has to be accepted. It's not a modification. It would be different if we said we're going to change how we lay out the pipes to get over a thousand, or we're going to add some element to get over a thousand. That's not at all what, what's being proposed. Mr. Frank, this, you, if you read that memo, th- there, there, no changes. They're just doing a better analysis of the current information and their analysis is that we've met the thousand gallons per minute. And so I don't think there's any way you can find that to be a modification of the application. Uh, the second thing is, I, I just want to comment on this, i- i- it, you know, because staff did. It's about looping the water system. If they told us they wanted a looped water system in, in, in incomplete notice. Now, at the time that notice came out, the city had, we believe the city had the ability to make that happen and we were willing to do it. Because at the time, if you look at Exhibits twelve through fifteen, this is kind of interesting. I- i- in and of itself, uh, at the time, we were doing that, this discussion. The people at Sunrise Village, some of the neighbors were, uh, trying to modify their plat. To remove this ten-foot common area between the Daro property, Bachelor View Two. And I think it goes up through Bachelor View One too, a- and the lots in that development. And they have this common strip that runs all the way from. Red Bluff Lane Trail Road to the edge of the Daro property. It goes back to that RV storage area. And there's a, there's a water line in it. And so as part of this tentative plat approval, we believe staff could have applied its to and through policy, which it has applied. To, to Mr. Kind, who's involved in this application and Bachelor View One consistently. It's a consistent policy that they apply. You have to extend the ability, you have to make. It possible to extend facilities to and through your site. So as part of that application, the city staff, we believe could have required. A public easement through that common tract to the property, which would have allowed the looping of the water line. But for whatever reason, staff decided they couldn't or wouldn't do that. So staff eliminated our ability to loop the water line. It's not that we don't want to do it. It's not that we're not willing to do it or couldn't physically do it. It would be good to do it. And if you listen to the opponents, some of them might tell you, they're concerned about fire issues. Looping the water line through that property, we think would have significant benefits for everybody in the area. And we wanted to do it. But we were prevented from doing it because of the way staff didn't apply their to and through policy to that application. Now, as it gets to the technical stuff, uh, uh, the applicant met with the fire department this week. And I, I think Mr. Bond, I think is the gentleman's name, was on the line. And we have an exhibit, it's Exhibit, uh, uh, Eleven, which talks about what you have to do when you have. Uh, lack of flow or when you have more than thirty lots with a single access. It's not an outright prohibition. In fact, Exhibit Eleven states that for access, if for single and two-family homes over thirty. If you have construction that's, uh, has approved sprinkling systems. Secondary access is not required. It says that in black and white. And, and so on the secondary access, uh, the question was, well, w- w- would the fire department approve that? And I, my information was that the fire department through Mr. Bond said, yeah, we, we do that at, uh, we do that at, uh. At, at building, uh, the time of building generally, but it's not uncommon that we would approve a single access if everything sprinkled. So he can comment more on that, but that's the information we took away from that meeting. And, and I think he even mentioned that sprinkling in this area is probably going to be required under the building code by the time these are built anyway. So. Um, that's the way you deal with, with that. Now on fire flow, it's kind of the same way. We think we have over a thousand. We think that's what the code I just read on the screen said, we need a thousand for fire flow for an hour. But i- if you don't have that, uh, you can also get approval if you have five hundred a minute for thirty minutes. Under the code, if you have alternative construction methods approved. And so there's another question for the fire department. It is if the, if the alternative construction methods are acceptable. Including sprinkling or whatever the, the department wants, um, then. The flow isn't an issue because we're over five hundred. Nobody disputes that. So that, that, we believe the fire issue really ought to be dealt with, with a reasonable condition of approval that at the time of building. Uh, uh, if, if the actual flow test, which we agree is the most accurate, I think even Tim Weisup said that. If at the time you go in for a building, if the test, the actual test of the line constructed is below the, the flow. You're going to have to sprinkle regardless of access. But here, it doesn't appear that access will, two access points would be available by then anyway, so we're still in the same. We're, we're in the same situation, a condition that requires. Alternative construction methods, including sprinkling or whatever the fire department requires. For one access, that's a condition that's feasible and, and the applicant is willing to deal with that. Um, let me look through my notes. Took a bunch of notes and staff was. Uh, you know, I think that's pretty much what I've got until rebuttal, so I appreciate your time and attention as always. And if you have any questions of me. Uh, or even the, the engineer, Tim Weisup, he's online. Uh, I, I think I covered his report really well. Uh, not being an engineer, but if you have questions of him, uh, about his report, he's happy to, to answer him.
Thank you, Mr. Kovek. Anybody else going to testify on behalf of the applicant?
I, I would just, uh, I would just ask, I, I don't know, Larry Kind is not with me. Uh, he's at a family, uh, uh, ceremony for a. A relative that passed away, so, but he's on the phone. If, if Mr. Kind wants to speak, I would, I would defer to him. Larry, you there? I, I guess self-coverage was not very good where he's at, so, uh, that would be it for the applicant.
Okay, I appreciate.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, he, he's there, Mr. Hearings Officer, I'm sorry. Mr. Kind is there.
Mr. Kind, you want to identify?
I'm sorry, I just.
Same address, please.
Yeah, Larry Kind, um. Yeah, I'm Larry Kind and I'm representing the applicant BCL LLC. Um, and you know, I think Mr. Kovek handled it, you know, really well. It, um, it. So I don't, I don't have any other comments.
Can you give me your address, Larry, please?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, my, uh, address is two five zero Northwest Franklin Avenue, Suite four oh one. Bend, Oregon, uh, nine seven seven oh three. Um, and I, I guess I will add just a very, very brief thing, you know, we did meet with, um, Jeff Bond yesterday and, and the Fire Marshal. Uh, Joel, and, um, you know, they, they said, you know, it's unusual for them to need to comment. They, they weren't used to doing that as a land use. And we said, well, we think it's appropriate because it looks like the code requires that. Unfortunately, uh, they usually just go handle it. Like, uh, Mr. Kovek said, at the building permit issue. But, you know, their comments was, yeah, that's just a common practice that we do. We do not want to stand in the way of, of development. So we, we work with. The building department on alternative methods to, um, uh, allow. For when there's lack of fire flow or when there's a lack of a secondary access. Um, and it's, they basically have to give permission and then it's the building official that determines which one is acceptable. So, that's what I got out of there. Jeff is on the line. If you'd like to clarify if I've misspoke, um, that'd be great, but that's how that meeting went yesterday. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kind. Anyone else, uh, Mr. Kovek going to testify on behalf of the applicant at this time?
Not at this time, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh. Is there anyone who wishes to testify in support of, in favor of the application? And if the moderator indicate to me whether or not any hands are raised and that you raise your hand if in fact you want to speak.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this would be the time and the place for anyone who is neutral. And if you raise your hand on this, you will be one of the first people I've ever had in a hearing to be neutral.
And I don't see any hands raised.
All right, then this is the time and the place for the opposition testimony. If you raise your hands, the moderator will basically. Uh, select you, uh, and elevate you so that your testimony, y- you have an opportunity to give your testimony.
So I'm going to unmute Micah Baird.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Micah Baird. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I live at six one zero seven five Bachelor View Road. Which is directly across the street from the proposed lot. Uh, and I have a couple of concerns. Uh, one is our well.
Mr. Baird, before you go on, I probably can misspell your first name and maybe even your last name. Would you spell both of them?
Sure. Micah, M.I.C.A.H., Baird, B.A.I.R.D.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
So, um. One, the, one concern is our well, which is about a hundred and twenty feet from the edge of the proposed development. And, um, so that's well within the five hundred feet, uh, considerably. So that makes us a bit nervous. Um. The other is that, uh, the proposed half-road will be forty-five feet from the front of our house. Um, so if they were expecting the other half of the half-road to eventually be developed, it would be in our living room. Um, so that is not going to happen. Um, but so there are, there's a couple of things. Have you, uh, visited the, the site?
No, I haven't, sir.
Okay, the, there's a couple of things that, that, you know, actually visiting the site would be very helpful and offer more insight. To, there's, um, the, you have documentation of it, but it's not as, uh, apparent. There about the, the actual undulations of the road and how it, uh, varies quite a bit. Um, and there's a couple of mature trees to the west that are between a hundred and a hundred and twenty feet tall. Um, that are actually, you know, almost directly above the edge of the pavement. Um, so, and at that point, there's only about two or three feet to the. Starting point of where they would have the, the saw line. So, you have the, I guess they said twenty-four feet, but then you're going to add two or three to a rather large tree. And it's also on that bend in the road, which is probably about eighty degrees. It's not quite ninety degrees. Um, so there's quite a bit of obstruction there, uh, for traffic. So, the, the applicant says they're going to put a sixty-foot road beyond that. But the road is going to go from sixty feet to twenty-six feet, rather abruptly and on a curve. Um, with some large trees and bushes. So there's, there is, um, you know, obviously, uh, traffic concerns. And, um, you know, right now, with the thirty houses, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, but you put another, you know, seventy-five houses in there. Uh, including the, the phaser, Bachelor View One and Two, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh. Danger. Uh, let's see, the, also, the, um. This is, not only is on a curve, there's also a dramatic elevation change. So there's, there's lots to be considered there. Um. Let's see, the, um. One of the things that I think isn't, hasn't been articulated quite clearly. Is that because of the new changes in the code, all this stuff is going to be one or two family dwellings at this point. But as they keep saying, this is a preliminary. Uh, assessment. So those things may change later. And, uh, previously the fire department said, you know, okay, you can have this flow rate for thirty homes. But now we're going to have, even at the low end. Um. A hundred homes. So that's three hundred percent more. And then if you add, if those end up being two-family homes or four-family homes, then, you know, we're talking about a thousand percent. Over the accepted minimums. So that's, that's considerable. Um, and I don't know if all of that is being kind of, uh, assessed in the long term, especially since there are. Other lots in this area that are also vacant. So sprinklers are not, you know, road width as it is. There's going to be a substantial amount of humans trying to exit in the event of an emergency. So I think that's about it. The other thing is storm water. Um, this lot is a is uphill from from our lot. Uh, so there's going to be quite a bit of runoff anytime it rains, you know. Uh, Oregon State says you can't have water from your property washing onto somebody else's property. Well, it happens. Especially when you have a storm like we had last week. So there's, there's a massive potential for storm water. Um, not only washing onto the property, but also contaminating wells. Uh, so those are my main concerns.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your testimony. Do appreciate your testimony. Who's whose hand is now raised?
I do not see anyone else's hand.
Okay, this is kind of like, uh, being at a restaurant or a bar. Uh, this is last call. If somebody.
Sorry, Mark Hinkle just raised his hand.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there, can you hear me?
I can hear you, sir. I'm going to have you identify yourself again. I know you've spoken earlier, at least I think you have.
Sure, yeah. My name is Mark Hinkle. First name is spelled M A R K, last name H I N K L E. Uh, the my address, six one zero six zero Bachelor View Road. And that's, uh. Obviously in Ben nine seven seven oh two.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, so for starters, um, I would like to request for a continuance and that the record remain open. Um, it has only really kind of occurred to me on this call that us neighbors should make, uh, evidence as part of the. The record or, you know, as far as exhibits go, um, our deeds affiliated with our properties and so that, you know, and the legal easements that go along with those deeds. Um, that's something that's just sort of eluded me in the past, but, um. Now I'm realizing that in order for you to make your decision in the most informed way that we should have, um, that as part of the record. So, um, I just want to make clear that I am requesting continuance or, uh, for the rec record remain open so we can add that evidence into the record. Uh, I I just, for starters, I don't understand how we can, and it's been brought up before, but I'll just echo it. How we can even be having this discussion before there's resolution of, uh, Bachelor View one. That application is currently being appealed to Luba and it's it's far from resolved in our opinion. Um, the application for the development wholly depends on the successful execution of the other project and its utilities being brought to the edge of this parcel. So it seems like we're doing this, we're putting the cart before the horse and doing this prematurely. Which I think is is not, um, necessarily responsible, a responsible way of doing things. I'd also like to say that the city correctly points out in the staff recommendation, the hearings officer dated six eight twenty two, the Bachelor View Road is encumbered. Um, and I should mention this includes the portion of the road which runs through. Bachelor View one, and those of us who are neighbors living on the road, as I've mentioned just previously, have those legal easements that's allowing us unfettered access to and from our homes. The developers never really explained to us or to city staff or to anyone how they plan to construct this road. Without trespassing on the private part of the road. Um, and at the same time, being able to get all of us through without, you know. Without unreasonable delays and, um, you know, that goes for bigger vehicles like garbage trucks and fire trucks and delivery trucks and things like that. And so that's very much a concern to all of us. We just don't really understand, especially at the the pinch point, as Mr. Kovak referred to it, you know, how that's going to be accomplished. Um, and, you know. On the, on the topic of the road, I mean, this road has become kind of a Frankenstein of a road. Or or what it has the potential to be a Frankenstein for a road, and it's just going to create a scenario that we believe. Is going to be problematic for years to come. Um, you've got a public-private conflict on this road. You know, who's going to plow snow and how are they going to plow it? Are they going to plow half the road and leave a huge pile of snow on the private part of the road? Um, you know, how how will it be maintained without trespassing on the private half of the road while they're meet while they're improving or maintaining the public half of the road? You know, under whose jurisdiction is it going to, when it when an accident happens, I mean, how's that going to work out? Who's, under whose jurisdiction will that fall? Um, none of these questions have been answered and I just think that, you know, there's a reason that there haven't been roads created like this in the past. And, um, it's because they're problematic and sadly, it's going to be us. You know, the citizens that have to deal with these problems in the future, once they arise, if we don't consider those problems now. I think the applicant is using a bit of a straw man argument for this needed housing. As an overriding logic for why this project be both projects really should get approved. I want to point out to you, Mr. Hearing Officer, that you should know that all new homes that are, uh, directly located to the north. Um, in terms of the lodges of Bachelor View. Um, in terms of their their listing prices when they're transacting, those are all going for a million dollars or more. So these homes that are being built are not going to be, they're going to be out of reach for most people. And they're probably going to be more of second homes or short-term rentals or or things like that. So I don't, I I think saying that this help is to to solve the housing problem is is just a is is not a valid argument. The the band comprehensive plan, I want to bring that up, uh, that the goal of that, and I quote, is to use Ben's existing urban land wisely, making efficient use of land inside the boundary with infill. And redevelopment focused in appropriate areas within the central core, along transit corridors and in key opportunity areas. And it says, see figure eleven dash one. Uh, this area, and I'm talking about you wrote, is not in one of those key opportunity areas, and thus I don't believe that we should be granting waivers. For for housing in these areas. Um, the waiver and the modification of public improvement standards, uh, to bypass the city code. This is an area, as we've talked about, of urban forest interface, which has been burned by wildfire in the past. With loss of property, I think eight homes were burned down. Um, so, you know, the danger is real and, um, I don't think making modifications and approving. You know. Uh, proving waivers to code and variances and things like that is, um, is responsible. And lastly, on the wells, uh, Mr. Kovak and the applicant are largely relying on the fact that since certain decisions, and and this doesn't just go for the wells, but a lot of other things that have been brought up on this call. But they're relying on the fact that certain decisions have been made in the past with lodges of Bachelor View or for B or for BVR one. And therefore we should apply those same decisions and logic or not logic, the same decisions as application. And I'd like to state that, you know, this should not in fact be. The the logic or the way that we are going about these decisions, these decisions and representations that have been made on very complex issues, as we all know. Were made by humans and humans can make mistakes. And so I don't think that this application should be considered on its own, or I do, I'm sorry, I do think this application should be considered on its own. As it has its own set of unique circumstances and challenges. Um, mistakes made in the past should not validate more mistakes to be made in the future. And I would just say in closing that, you know, this it's, and and this is just my personal opinion, but it's sad. That a developer with a slick lawyer can leverage mistakes that may have been made by city staff or by hearings officers in the past. To their advantage to continue to make those, let those mistakes be made into the future. And the people that are going to bear the burden of those mistakes are we, the citizens and the neighbors that live around these half-baked roads and developments. Um, with all the waivers and variances and things that have been granted in conjunction with them. And so. I just feel that that's incredibly unfortunate and I hope that we can be. You know, open-minded enough to change our minds or to realize when mistakes have been made in the past so that we don't continue to make those mistakes in the future. That's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate your comments. Um, and I will take them into consideration when I make my decision. Uh, anyone else's hands raised? Hand raised?
Andrew West.
Mr. West?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you fine. Thank you. First name, last name, spell your first and last name and give us an address.
Andrew A N D R E W West, W E S T. And I live between Mark Hinkle and Micah Baird at six one zero six nine Bachelor View Road. And nine seven seven oh two. I just want to second all the comments that they had made. I also have a well that's within a hundred feet. Of all this potential stormwater runoff. And if you were in up here. Anytime during a rainstorm, you will notice the tremendous amount of runoff that this whole area has because of the elevation. And it's really. Quite disappointing that hearings officers and planning people don't come out to visit these sites. Because being here is a little different than just looking at a flat piece of paper. And sitting in an engineering office, looking at a computer screen, it's not the same. You really should come out and experience this road and these neighborhoods, the people that live out here. And try to understand the decisions that you're making and how it impacts people. Because the city's desire for all-out constant development at all costs. Will come back to bite them at some point in time with their own liability with all these waivers. And for you, Mr. Frank, I still am having a large problem. With the the review of Bachelor View one. Whereas you single-handedly went through and dismantled the entire Ben City code as being. Both subjective and arbitrary and therefore unenforceable. You could pretty much say that about any code. So what's the point of having a code? If any word in there says close to, therefore the whole code goes out. If it says it suggests, you know, keeping the majority of the trees, majority means what? It's arbitrary, right? So is the word needed as in needed housing. It's arbitrary. So we have to have some set of rules that we can go by here and stop just granting waivers to every person that asks for it. Because of the supposed need for more housing. Now, I I reiterate, I. I have a problem with the fire and one thing that people keep bringing up is that we're just going to solve it with sprinkler system. So with loop system or whatever. We, if you come out here and take a look, we do abut the Forest Service. And in case you've been hiding in a hole for the last few years and haven't noticed what's happened. We keep losing town after town subdivision after subdivision to wildfires. And I don't believe that any sprinkler system in the world is going to stop these raging wildfires that rip through these areas. We have a situation here where we have one point of access and during the last fire here, when the already whole fire rolled through. One of my neighbors had to swim across the Deschutes River to get out of here. And then the fire jumped the river and they had to get back in the river and swim back across again. Until search and rescue found them the next day. So let's not just dismiss this as being something that we can solve on paper until it finally happens. And then we realize our mistakes. Can we see if we can get ahead of this problem with the fire, traffic and access? And lastly. I'm going to point out that one of the waivers that Mr. Frank granted. Almost cost me my life a couple of weeks ago when I was coming down the road on my bike. And at one point. You guys granted them an access to a lower speed limit along one stretch that's a blind corner. And that's where I almost got hit. I ended up in the butcher bushes on Mr. Helm's property. Because someone was coming up the road too fast and didn't see me. That is a problem that is not going to be solved by a fifteen mile an hour speed limit sign. So these waivers have real life consequences to them. And that's about all I have time for. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I I appreciate the the visceral emotion that that you have and I appreciate your concerns. I'm going to take an ever so briefly, and I will do it in less than sixty seconds opportunity. To indicate to you. Uh, where the limitations are and. Uh, as 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 somebody a lot more famous than me indicated that we are a nation of laws and and not, uh, people. And that the laws that that you're asking me, uh, in some version to to. Uh, look through or around or or perhaps not not focus on. Uh, such as the needed housing provisions. My decision. Painfully reviewed, uh, those that what Oregon revised statute one ninety seven, I think it's three oh seven. And, uh. I was forced and I think the city and the applicant and most of us. Uh, would agree if you look at the definitions that this is in fact, uh. Fits the definition of needed housing. It is not needed. It doesn't say needed low-income housing anymore. It doesn't talk about a certain price of housing. It talks about needed housing. And if if you struggled with. Uh, my ultimate conclusions that in your language, I eviscerated the code. Um, I can assure you that going through the code was not a pleasant. Uh, experience for me. Uh, to to basically suggest and indicate and conclude. Uh, that many of the provisions in the band of code, especially the subdivision ordinance portion. Were not clear and objective. And it's, I was not the person. Nor was Mr. Henson on behalf of the city, the person who who, uh, came up. With the needed housing concept. Nor did he draft or did I draft the provisions of the needed housing statutes. And I did not, uh, independently. Make up decisions, uh. Regarding what section should be, uh, considered clear and objective and which ones weren't. Uh, I did my best and I agree with you that people do make mistakes and particularly hearings officers can make mistakes. But I will tell you that I did my best to rely on, uh, legal decisions made by appellate, uh, level. Uh, judges or board members that included the Land Use Board of Appeals and the Oregon Court of Appeals. I did my best to apply those, uh, to to the code and. If in fact. I was to disregard the the state statute, uh, and regarding needed housing and simply said. All of those sections of Ben Development Code were just fine and dandy. Uh, ultimately, it's going to go to the Land Use Board of Appeals or Court of Appeals or right in Supreme Court and those those, in my opinion, those. Those bodies are going to find, uh, consistent or at least in most cases, consistent with what. I arrived at in my Bachelor View one decision. So. I sincerely appreciate your comments and trust me when writing the decision on Bachelor View one. Everything you said was echoing in the back of my mind, not because you said it today, but it were thoughts that were going through my mind. So very much appreciate your comments. Anyone else's hand raised, please?
I don't see any other hands raised.
All right, Miss, Mr. Kovak.
Uh, thank you, uh, Hearing Officer Frank. Uh, I I don't have a lot to say. You know, uh, I guess I could say, echo what you said is is I I I get it, you know, the the, there are some laws and proof of criteria. That that apply and and there's those that don't apply and and in our realm, you have to apply the laws and and to the application. And sometimes it it's not consistent with somebody's view from the outside how it should be. Um, and and that's a valid perspective. Uh, I think we're all people. I I own property. I think a lot of us own property and when something affects you, uh, that's a valid concern is it should apply differently. But the reality is the laws are written and they apply the way they've been written and that's the same for a code. And and I want to talk about a couple of specific things about concerns about runoff. Right now the land is vacant and water flowing off that land can flow wherever it wants. Oregon follows the natural flow rule. Uh, here, there's no liability if naturally flowing water hurts somebody else's property. Going forward after development, though, you know, the bend code, and this is one area where these laws are really good. Because the bend code requires that all of the stormwater from the newly developed flats has to be contained on the lot. Uh, and it requires for public improvements that we handle and contain all of the runoff from the public improvements we're proposing. So one, another way to look at it is the development, uh, could eventually, and and when it's all done, make runoff from the property. From the property, the subject property better. Because these laws and code requirements mandate how it's dealt with and and we're not allowed to let it run off onto neighbors property, no developer is. And so I hope that responds a little bit to Mr. Barrett's concerns about the runoff. There was one clarification that the road doesn't go from sixty to twenty six feet. The the road. The width of the road actually would be thirty two feet, I think, at its widest. You have a sixty foot right away, but the the paid travel portion is is thirty two. Even on that sixty foot dedication on the south tip of the development. So it's it is going to go from, you know, a little bit wider to a little bit narrower, but overall. We think that, you know, that the 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 improvement on access and the the improvement on safety. Will come from having a wider travel surface and and I I would just note that in the traffic. Report that we submitted at the amended complaint or amended application. There was no site distance or horizontal curve issues on this phase. Bachelor View two and and city staff did not disagree with that. So. We think these improvements are going to be designed and constructed very safe, as safe as the code requires. And. And making them wider hopefully will avoid incidents like Mr. Henkel had where where there's only a very narrow pavement fifteen feet. It's maybe hard to get out of the way, but if you have thirty feet of pavement and a sidewalk. Even if it's a curb type sidewalk, there is an alternative if a car is coming. So we hope it'll get a little better. We think it will. Quite a bit better. The. The waiver, I wanted to to talk about Mr. Henkel's comments that somehow we're trying to. To use city mistakes to get away with something. And, you know, this first time I think I remember somebody referring to me as slick. Most people I know refer to me as the opposite of slick, but. But we're really not trying to 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 do anything close to that. What what I'm saying is. On the U I Cs on the lodges that the evidence we put in the record demonstrates that the lodges was properly approved. The U I Cs were approved because of Ben's. Establishment of this rule authorization for U I Cs within five hundred feet. And so all we said is that because they complied with the D Q requirements there. We can demonstrate that we equally comply and we just want the same condition, not because they made a mistake. But because they did it right and we're doing it right. Same thing for. The. The the dedication. We're not saying that the city staff made a mistake. We're saying when the city staff says dedication has to be without reservation or restriction. The city has established legally what that means. And and what it means is they can put a public. They can put a dedicated right of way over an easement. And accept that dedication as long as they don't. Get rid of the easement rights. They're still there. They're not interfering with them because they're not doing something. For example, if the city approved a building on that easement. That would be a problem, but by building a road over the easement, it serves the same purpose as the road there now. It's better, but but we're not asking. We're not saying the city's making a mistake. They're actually just interpreting their code correctly to say we can accept dedication over that existing easement. And and if it was proper there, it's proper now. So we're not asking to, we're not saying the city made mistakes and we're not asking to get away with anything. We just think that's the standard and it should be applied equally on every application. As to the cost of homes and needed housing, there's two points I want to make. One is it's it's really is. I agree. It's unfortunate that. Houses are a million dollars. In in band, it looks to me from Zillow and and just research that. Starter home in band is a million dollars. That that's just an unfortunate reality, but but what what the goal, how needed housing goes with that is. Needed housing statutes and in the way you've applied it in Bachelor View one, the goal was to remove some impediments. To getting housing on the market. And I think the concept, it's it's almost. Unavoidable to reach the conclusion that. The more housing you can make available, the 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 less demand and therefore the more affordable the housing will become. And so that's how I think. That's the long term view of this needed housing. We're not trying to get rid of rules and regulations that may be subjective for the sake of getting rid of them. The this the legislature made a decision that we have to, we have to avoid some of them. Or we can't apply some of them because we need more housing and part of that is because we got to get the price affordable. Are reasonable so that people can get a starter home for less than a million dollars. And the second point on the waiver is we're not linking the waiver of the street standards to needed housing at all. The the waiver stands on its own. It's we looked at what we were proposing, full standard half street improvements. We were only asking. To be relieved of dedicating forty feet. We don't or twenty feet we don't own. And then putting improvements on it that we can't put on because we don't own it and 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 the city engineer has said that is a very common practice. That is one of the more common waivers because. The city acknowledges that you can't force somebody to build a sixty foot full road if they don't control all the property necessary to do it. And so it's not linked to needed housing. It's it's only linked because it's it's a waiver that's requested as part, you know, to go along with this this housing application. And and again, the last thing on on Mr. West's comment about the gentleman had to swim across the river. It's a very scary situation, but again, on the waiver. We think that by widening the road and putting in more. Ability to get people out. Sure, there'll be more people there, but there'll be a better road. That's going to be publicly maintained. Now, maintenance and and how people get in during construction, I think there's a really good answer to that, that 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 when when these public improvements are built, they're not built. Without permits and further approvals. So during the building in the approval process for these public improvements. I would expect that the city staff will have conditions requiring some form of access management plan. So that people can still get in and out of their properties during the construction. That's a reasonable approach and I don't think, I know my client wouldn't pose that and I don't think any reasonable developer would say I can build whatever I want and. And I don't care how people get in and out of their houses during constructions. That's not the way we're going to approach it, and I don't think that's the way the city would allow any. Developer to approach that situation. So those are issues that that will. Be worked out in in during permitting with city oversight. And and we certainly don't expect to to have any problems complying with reasonable access management during construction and after construction. So. That's what I have to say on that. I appreciate everybody's comments. I I hope. We've given good information to clarify any misconceptions about what what's being proposed. And what the situation is going to be when when this development goes in, hopefully. Thank you.
Larry Kind has some more comments as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Kind.
Thank you so much. You know, the one thing I want to make sure that we're perfectly clear is, you know, and I when as I'm sitting here listening as a third party is. We keep talking about half street improvements. That doesn't mean it's a half street. It means that we're building what is required within. A full street. I mean, a required street is a minimum of twenty four or twenty eight or thirty two. We're doing one of those. We're doing all of the sidewalks on our side. The only thing that is getting waived on there is the curb and the sidewalk on the other side. The full pavement width. Is being built by us. So it it's not a half street as what you would think. It's a full street without a curb and a sidewalk on one side. And in addition, we're giving, you know, there's some additional pavement there on that other side. And I hear the opponents go and say, well, you know, they can't go trespass on that property and do that. Well, it's my right to travel on that as the owner of the Darrow property and the helm property just as much as them. And my guests and my delivery people and my anybody that I invite in have every bit of right to go on that, as do they and their guests. And so. If if we need to go utilize that or these people need to go utilize that, we have every right to do that per those documents that are not even a matter of this. And it doesn't even have any point in this. Proceedings because it's not criteria. But we do have the right to utilize that every bit as they do. The property owner does, as well as all of the other new properties that are owned in in there because it benefits. The entirety of that property. It doesn't matter if you cut it up into a thousand pieces, twenty pieces or forty four pieces. They all have the right to utilize that just as the other twenty nine properties behind there. You know, as far as, you know, what the gentleman that almost got hit by the bicycle or on the bicycle is coming down. You know what? It's going to be better. I mean, he just basically proved the point to us that they have a problem there that exists before we do any development. So that that's not a, that would never be a denial of a purpose for denial of ours. That's a existing problem they have. With us going and increasing the road and making it a full. Width road plus whatever extra pavement is on there is going to make it significantly better. And with posting a speed limit sign, which is not there. Is going to give it even better. As far as the fire goes. The fire danger in there is what it is. Whether you have, you know, more subdivision in there or not. Is not going to change what that existing fire is. What is going to go change is the ability to have a much bigger, wider road. The road that's built in there is willy nilly. Like they said, it's Frankenstein. It's got ups and downs and it's got trees and it's wiggling around trying to save everything. Well, the city of Ben's not going to allow us to do that. We've got to go put in a road that meets all these standards that are, you know, nationwide and by the city and by the state and all that type of stuff for safety to get in and out. It's going to be a significantly better road to be able to exit people out of there. And so, you know, I I one hundred percent understand the emotion. I understand what they're talking about. I also understand that they've got their piece of Ben and they don't really care if anybody else gets any more of of Ben. They just don't want it in their backyard. And that's disappointing, you know, I thought Ben was more inclusive than that, you know, so but I I just wanted to make perfectly clear that the road is not a half. Road improvement. It's a full road improvement with the exception of a curb. And a sidewalk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Mr. Kovak in rebuttal?
No, thank you very much.
Mr. Henson?
Yes, we were going to circle back to the issue of whether the new evidence. That was submitted constitutes a modification of application. I do have some other. Late breaking additions to the record, including an email from Chris Henningson. That was sent to Mr. Kovak and Mr. Weissup. During the hearing that I'd like to share regarding the fire flow issue. If you would. Which which those things would you like me to cover first?
Your testimony, you pick.
Okay, so. During the hearing, I also verified that the. The application fee for the waiver. Has now been paid. And the documents that are in that record are nothing. Other than, you know, the the application itself basically are the. There's the same authorization form that was submitted for the subdivision application. There's the same tentative plan. Submitted for the. Applications. There's only two or three or four documents. And they're documents that. That you already have for the subdivision application. So. Perhaps that's just a formality. And. We don't need to worry about the. The the fact that the notice did not list this new. Waiver application. File number in Bachelor View one, our notice did list both file numbers and your and your decision. Contain both file numbers and there was the the signs that were posted for Bachelor View one listed both file numbers, but. Maybe it's not. A serious issue and because the waiver was. Clearly requested and writing as part of. This subdivision application, just they. Were catching up with some of the required paperwork and fees. But it's this is. Your call because this is. New information that just, you know, came in. The the day of. The hearing for public testimony. I can stop there or I can go to the fire flow issue. Ensure the screen.
Let me just ask you a quick question. I would prefer that you just went through the whole thing and then I came back. I I I am always cautious that I might have forgotten something or not gone back and looked at my notes adequately enough to. And I don't want to get through the hearing without making sure that that I respond to what you just said. I only have really one question and maybe it precipitates others, but my one question is what does staff? Do? With the waiver application procedurally, process wise? And the. Sub. Question to that is it? It is going to, is it going to receive, I'm assuming it does, a separate? File number? Does it require a separate decision? Is that decision a staff decision necessarily or absolutely, or is it potentially? A decision that can be once again forwarded to a hearings officer? I I'm I'm a little concerned. From a notice perspective. If in fact. A a separate and distinct application. Is somehow melded into this current case. I'm not sure I expressed myself clearly, but give a shot at an answer or answers to that.
Sure, yeah, I mean. Ordinarily, we would combine the two. We would have one decision issued. And this project, I would assume that we would have elevated both. And have you issue one decision as you did for Bachelor View one? But we, there are some times when we have multiple applications and. Part of the part of the one file number is handled with with a hearing. Sometimes for for instance. We'll have a an amendment to a. Master plan in the. Mixus Riverfront zone that will will elevate that to review by the planning commission, but. Review the site plan review administratively. If. If you feel that we can't combine these at this point, that the variance should be on its own. Excuse me, the waiver should be on its own track. You know, we can do a thirty day completeness check on it. We can. We could do a type two review, I suppose administratively that would be. You know, subject to a separate. Appeal process. It just seems like the applicant would want to avoid. That and I I know I think I would like to avoid that too.
Okay, well, I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to that, but it's it's just I'm I'm concerned. About. At this stage. Without a public notice. Incorporating a separate and distinct application file in my decision. So I'm looking, so I think you've answered the question that typically. You you if you'd received them at the same time, you'd have probably elevated it both. I understand that. But you didn't. In this particular case. They are now separate applications, one having been elevated, the other perhaps arguably elevated, and that's that's the issue that I need to address.
Yes.
Anything further on that issue? I'll I'll come back to you. Trust me, I'll come back to you on the modification issue, but it's just. Let's let's get this one solved.
Okay. So am I moving on to the fire flow issue now?
No, let's let's just stop this because, you know, I see this as kind of a fork in the road. Have to make a decision and I'm going to. Ask for Mr. Kovak to respond. To my expression, perhaps imprecisely of a concern. That we have a separate and distinct waiver application. From the application that was noticed for the subdivision plot approval. Tended to plot approval. Mr. Kovak?
Oh, thank you. So, well, first of all, we share staff's sentiment that we'd like to avoid two separate. Processes going and we apologize for putting staff in that position and and the hearings officer as well, but. The burden of proof that went with the main application on the first, very first. But the burden of proof that went with the main application on the first, very first page where it says, what are you requesting? It said a forty-four lot subdivision and a waiver of public improvements. And then in the burden of proof, there was a detailed narrative explaining why the waiver should be granted in our view and what it was. It's very specific. And that was all fully available to the public and staff and everybody when it was filed. When the notice of the application went out, everybody knew where to read that and get it. It was addressed in the staff report, which is the first time that we learned of the, of the missing application form and checked. Now, what, what has been submitted, the second part of that is this, what has been submitted as far as this quote "new" application is a form and a check. So anything new? The form is just, just a basic application form and everything else that went with it was the burden of proof that we had just, I just referred to, the original one. And the original site plan from the modified application that said we sought a waiver. So as far as, as any potential prejudice to anybody, this issue has been in the record and before everybody from the very, from when the application was first noticed, notice of pending application, notice of hearing, everything was the same. And so we, we don't believe there's any prejudice to anybody's substantial rights in having the application for the modification or waiver decided as a, as it had been in the past. This is not a situation, I agree, there are sometimes where applications do go differently. This is not one that typically does, I think, as Mr. Henson said, it, when a modification to a public improvement that's part of another application comes in, it's been my practice and Ben that, in my experience, that they always go hand in hand. They're either both decided by staff or if they're elevated, they're both decided by the hearings officer. So to have these on different tracks in this case would be unique, I think, and, and not a wise use of everybody's resources. So that's, that's my response on that. We really do not believe this is, requires a separate process and a separate application under the circumstances of this case.
Do you want my response?
Well, I, I guess this would be the time. I don't have any, anything else I can add. We acted promptly to get the fee in. The city's got the fee. The city's got the form. It, it just seems like everybody's got what they need to decide the issue and, and it's, it's, it's the most efficient way to go.
I'm going to agree with you to the extent that the most efficient way to go would be simply to make a decision on the subdivision application, including the waiver request. I, I, I don't think that I can argue with you on that. What I can say though, and I want to make abundantly clear to you is that I, if I make that decision, then I'm going to leave you and the city to decide how to process the separate and distinct application form with fee. Does that make sense?
I believe it does.
Okay, so I'm willing to make a decision based on what I have in the record, including your burden of proof. But I am unwilling, without re-noticing, to make a formal decision, an independent, specific decision with respect to the waiver application and submission of fee. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so Mr. Henson, let's go back to you then. To be abundantly clear, I am not making a decision in this case on the application for waiver as set forth in the form with the accompanying payment. I am looking and will look at the request made for the subdivision tentative plot approval and do my best to make that decision. But it is not a decision on that separate distinct application. Do you understand, Mr. Henson?
Yes, I think so. And so therefore the decision would have to either be made after notice by staff or our director would have to notice and elevate that separate and distinct application. No, you're shaking your head.
My understanding is that that's what Mr. Kovak has agreed. Did I misstate you, Mr. Kovak?
Well, I was, I, I'm a little confused now. I, I thought, yes, I, I thought there, there would be a notice of the separate decision and then a single decision by you after that notice. And what I expected is that that would require some time concession by the applicant.
I'm being candid with you. I have no idea what you just said.
I think, let me, let me interject it. If I understand Chris correctly, so that the city could, could now provide notice. But, you know, as with the modification of application, the applicant is typically required to restart the hundred-and-twenty day clock, for instance, so that we get both of these applications on the same review clock. The
Mr. Mr. Henson, let me stop you. That is not my understanding, all right? My understanding is this, that I asked Mr. Kovak if he agreed on behalf of his client whether or not the waiver application could and would be dealt with separately and distinctly by you, the city, from the current application for the subdivision plot approval, tentative plot approval. That was my understanding. And if I misunderstood, because what I see quite candidly, if I was, and I, and it's not my decision to make, but if I was in the applicant's position and I looked at the history of the two cases that I've been involved with on Bachelor View Road, I would look at the city as being somewhat problematic to accepting applicants' positions. And it would seem to me that the app, that the city, if the city desired to deal with this administratively, I understand the city probably can do that. But it also is my understanding the city could decide to elevate that separate and distinct application to a hearing. And that seems to be as totally contrary to what Mr. Henson just said, is that there would be a time delay, time whatever to notice and put them together. This is not putting them together. This is dealing with them separately. And it is convoluted and cumbersome, in my opinion, to do it that way. Mr. Henson, quite honestly, I believe your approach is much more desirable. And that is basically the clock is restarted, we continue the hearing. We, I don't know, based on, on your code, whether or not, and limit the testimony just to the new information related to the waiver, that would be my preference, but I don't think we can do that. This is not as simple as, as it first appears, in my opinion. And I'm not sure now what Mr. Kovak is actually asking for, and I'd like him to clarify that.
Thank you. Yeah, I apologize if I wasn't clear. I, I was suggesting something along the same lines, is that, that we would get these on the same track for a single decision and, and however the city feels it can do that. I, I believe there's a way to do it.
Tell me how we do that then.
Well, I, if I heard Mr. Henson correctly, if, if the city elevates the modification to hearings officer level and the hearing in this matter is continued, I, I thought I heard him say the city could give a new notice. And there would be a new process for testimony, and you identified an issue that I think has to be dealt with. What is the scope of the testimony? I, I know when there's a modification to the application, there are ways where the testimony or new evidence is limited to just the specific items sought to be modified. I don't know if that can apply by analogy. But, but that's a procedural issue that I think you have to figure out. But, but, but my overall objective is similar to what I think I heard Mr. Henson say would be to, to get this elevated if the city's willing to do it. Build in the time necessary to make a single decision. Extend the time period or continue the hearing to allow that to happen. And then make one decision, because that's the way it typically is. And I think it's hard to, to decide the subdivision application without also deciding the waiver application.
Yeah, these, these two applications are inextricably linked, and I think that is the right approach, but we would I think we would need the applicant to agree to restart the hundred-and-twenty day clock as of the date this waiver application was submitted, which was basically today. And then we can, we can arrive at a, an agreed-upon date for holding that hearing. Our notice requirement is, you know, minimum twenty days notice. Obviously, we need a few days to prepare the notice to get that queued up for mailing. So we, we would have to look at dates that are a little over three weeks out for the, for the for the continuance or new, new hearing that combines both applications.
Mr. Kovak, and I'm not being, I'm trying not to be presumptuous, and I'm sure you think I am, but it's I, I got a little beep of a yellow icon, and the only other time I've seen that in this hearing is, is when Mr. Kine was, was asking to testify. If you need a minute or two to talk to your client, I am glad to basically delay the record or allow you to do that. But if that's not the case, then I agree and I apologize for, for misunderstanding your first comment. If in fact, we don't have a clock problem, if in fact, we set a new hearing, if in fact, staff does some looking into whether or not, and you as well, into limiting testimony related to the waiver issue. That's a wish list. If that's, if that's what you're doing and that's what it sounds like now, I'm a hundred percent for that, and I would appreciate that only because one or both of you said that these decisions are intertwined so, so much that it would be a challenge to issue the subdivision tentative plot approval decision before the waiver case is perceived, is processed.
Well, I appreciate the offer because I have been trying to communicate with Mr. Kine, and that was what he was trying to do, is call me on the other line. This family thing, memorial service. So if I could get a couple of minutes to try to reach him on his cellphone and get back to you, I would really appreciate that.
Okay, let, let me, let me do this. And Mr. Henson, if you're moderator, can help on this. For those of you who are still here, there's nineteen participants. Would you please stay here and please not go anywhere? I'm going to give Mr. Kovak, it's three thirty-eight by my clock, so I'm assuming that it'll switch to three thirty-nine ever so shortly. So we will resume at, if it's agreeable, at three forty-three? Would that work, Mr. Kovak? Gives you four minutes?
Uh, that would be great. I'm on the phone with my client right now.
Okay, so we, we're, it's not a recess because I don't know how to do that on Zoom, but we're going to go on recess best I can call it until three forty-three. Mr. Henson, you understand?
I do. It's a good time for a bio break for everybody too, I'm sure.
All right, thank you. We'll be back in four or five minutes.
Okay.
Hey Siri. Call Dave Wall.
The hearings officer is available when when all the parties are 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 available.
Staff is also back.
I'll wait for Mister Kovak.
All right, I'm back.
All right, this is Greg Frank. Uh, Mister Kovak says he's back. Uh, Mister Hanson is is available. So where are we, Mister Kovak?
Uh, just uh I I I I think we and staff agree in principle, uh and I just had one a couple of points of clarification. So we would like to see this matter continued for the purpose of having a a new hearing that would be joined with the modification application after staff elevates and provides the appropriate notice. The only remaining question, and this is uh as much a question to staff as it is to the hearings officer is does the current seven 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 apply to the subdivision? And then new evidence comes in on the waiver, everybody would if if new evidence, well, it would come in, then would people have another seven 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 opportunity there or is everything pushed to one hearing and we push the seven 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 issue out to the consolidated hearing? Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. Mister Hanson, you can respond first, but I do have an opinion on this.
Um, you know, I'm not an attorney you guys are, but uh I think it would for simplicity's sake, it would be my preference that we just uh merge these two um and um have the seven 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 on both of them after the um continued hearing.
That and that Mister Mister Kovak uh iris uh and I and I respect Mister Hanson's opinion because I actually agreed with it a hundred percent. Uh, but I will tell you that uh my options, the way I read the Ben code are to either grant a continuance or 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 to keep the record open. Um, this keeping the right, the continuance is a continuance of an initial public hearing. Which my reading of of the law is that there'd be the uh an open record opportunity after uh at the end of that continued hearing. So that's my understanding of the law. Yeah, I'm I'm open to comments.
I I I tend to agree with that, uh, because that would be essentially the first hearing on on the waiver. And so I I agree. That would be the appropriate way to handle it under the statute. And I also think it makes the most practical sense.
Okay, let's talk about dates right now. If you don't mind, Mister Kovak and Mister Hanson. I'm I'm gonna have Mister Kovak uh take the floor first. And he can make the proposal on the continued hearing date and then I'll have Mister Hanson, you will be able to respond. And then I will consider both of your comments.
Uh, well, before I make a proposal, I I I guess I'd like to put uh Mister Hanson on the on the spot and ask when the notice would go out. And then how much? Because I think we have to coordinate the your schedule, Mister Frank. To course coincide with after a reasonable period after the notice goes out, don't we, Mister Hanson?
Yeah, we do. And um so my my recommendation or, you know, realistically, I think the soonest that we could probably get this notice out would be um this Friday. Um, and uh if it's a twenty day notice, uh, three weeks from uh the seventeenth of June puts us at uh uh around July eighth. Um, is that yeah, seven fourteen. Around July eighth, so um we would probably need to have the continuance set for something like um Monday, July eleventh. Early the week of July eleventh.
Mister Kovak.
I'm uh I'm looking at my calendar now that that yes, uh I I it's fine, that works. Uh, we we we're sure we we take responsibility for this and uh we'll work with your schedule. So July that week, July works.
All right, I was just looking at my calendar on the wall, so um July eleventh will work. One o'clock.
Perfect.
And uh I think what we would be looking for, uh, and I don't know how this works with the continuance rules, but uh perhaps the simplest would be is if the applicant agreed to um to toll the hundred twenty day clock until such time as we reconvene.
Right, so whatever time
Done.
is from today until then, we we toll.
So the tolling will be from the fifteenth of June to the eleventh of July.
Correct. Correct.
That seems simpler than, you know, having to restart. You know, a clock to try to synchronize these. I think that works.
And I have the Eric, Mister Hanson, I have about seventy some days left on the clock.
That's that's correct. Yes. Seventy seven.
Yeah, that should give us plenty of time uh uh if the hearings officer agrees, plenty of time to get a a decision out.
Yeah, I think so too. Um.
All right, I'm gonna give Mister Hanson then. Um, you were in the middle of your testimony. I interrupted because I wanted to make sure we got this procedural issue resolved. Uh, yeah, I now turn it back to you if you wish to have additional testimony.
I do, um. Uh, let me see if I can share my screen. Um, can you, are you, are you seeing an email uh that that contains a highlighted line regarding fire flow?
Yes.
Okay, so um we had some discussion about, you know, what's the standard here um for a fire flow for this development. There appears to be a difference in the standard in specs. This uh document that I have here is section five point six point one uh from the city of Ben standards and specs, which says that for standard density residential uh subdivisions that the required flight fire flow is one thousand five hundred gallons per minute. Um, that is different than um the uh Oregon Fire Code requirement, uh, the letter that we received from Jeff Bond that says uh one thousand. So the again, the the standards and specs contain a higher standard. And so I wonder if this is also a waiver issue, um where this the applicant may need to seek a waiver um from the fire flow requirements of the city standards and specs.
Mister Kovak, you want to respond to that?
Well, I I don't know if I can respond on the spot. This is the first time that standard and spec has been uh interjected uh and uh I I I don't have, I haven't I had the time to study it. Uh, I'd like to to do that and talk to the engineers about uh how that's been interpreted and applied because it's it's brand new.
Okay, let me make a suggestion and as all my suggestions, uh they're subject to revision uh by by outside views and comments. Um, my suggestion is that during the next week or so, uh prior to the eleventh hearing. Mister Kovak, you review along with your engineers or consultants uh and have further discussions with the city. If Mister Hanson's speculation, and at this point in time, I think that's what it is, is whether or not it requires an additional waiver and or modification, uh and would require potentially additional notice or additional applications being filed. Uh, you can decide within that period of time. If in fact, uh, there is something that has to be done uh that we're not contemplating now. In other words, a fire flow a waiver modification. And let's do our best to figure out a way to incorporate that into this particular process. And Mister Kovak and Mister Hanson, you have every right uh to to submit a formal request to the hearings officer to have a further continuance beyond the eleventh. Uh, and the only thing I see in the code uh that concerns me is we need to have a date certain. So if in fact, something comes up, Mister Kovak or Mister Hanson uh that that requires additional application and or consideration that we can't handle on the eleventh. Let's not come back on the eleventh and have the discussion then. Let's let's have you all take care of the the issue um before that. And if if necessity requires we'll we'll continue it to another date. If it doesn't uh then we'll consider everything on the eleventh. And if there's an argument or a horse race going on as far as how to do it, that's what I'm here for and that's what I have to decide. And so I'll consider it on the eleventh. So what I'm trying to do is give you the all the options and not preclude you uh from either a further continuance or we simply argue about it on the eleventh. Does that make sense?
Perfect.
It does, and I I'm I'm wondering, um
Yeah.
Thinking out loud here, if I can keep the notice uh general in nature that just says, you know, uh noticing a a waiver to public improvement standards, but out without uh calling out each and every specific waiver that's requested. That I don't know that that's uh sufficient notice or not.
Mister Mister Hanson, I'm uncomfortable with that, quite honestly, and I
Mister Hanson.
I'm sorry, Mister Mister Kind.
That's Mister Kind, yeah.
Yep, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, yeah, he- hearings off, I'm sorry to interject, but um in in an abundance of caution to go take care of it, what I would suggest is we will either today or first thing in the morning by nine o'clock turn in a um modified narrative on that standard that incorporates that. And then that notice will go out for that, including that. And then we can just stay on the eleventh path that we currently have. And that's just an abundance of caution in the event that it's needed, instead of us debating it back and forth forever. If that's acceptable to to Aaron.
That makes sense to me. They just let me know if you're also seeking a waiver to the yeah, just let me know if you're also seeking a waiver to the fire flow requirements and submit that uh tomorrow, uh preferably
Yeah.
Before noon or something.
About is we'll just we'll just add that to the we'll just yeah, we'll just we'll just add that to the narrative and we'll we'll make a commitment to get that into you before noon or before uh ten o'clock tomorrow morning. Just that it all we're doing is changing the narrative and then we can just stay on the same path.
Sounds good.
Mister Hanson, is there one fee for that or two?
Um, we would just cover this all in one fee. Don't
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want I don't want to get off track on something small.
No, no. And I I and I'm I'm trying to wrap things up here and apologize, but um we were playing by the seat of our pants with the the various or the waiver application coming in just yesterday and the fee paid today. The um, you know, Mister hearings officer, if possible, I would strongly uh uh encourage you to take a site visit. Um, you know, I I have driven this road many times um to uh and it, you know, to see the the road and uh I've been, you know, out uh all the way out to the river on this road. Um, and I I having grown up in Bend, um I was around for the Aubrey Hall fire and uh its scars are still plainly visible on this property. Um I uh at the time of the Aubrey Hall fire, I lived uh just a couple of miles from Shovlin Park where the uh near where the fire started. Um, I was out of town at the time, but came back to uh find the road to my house blocked off by the National Guard and um it there were a number, number of homes, uh according to the testimony that we've received. Twenty-two homes were burned in that fire. But um the uh, you know, again, please read through all of the public testimony uh as of uh the conclusion of the hearing, I think there's now close to twenty uh just recently submitted uh letters or emails um to the hearings officer on uh addressing the various criteria that pertain to the uh review of the subdivision. So um thank you for bearing with us as we um kind of struggled with um some of these procedural issues and um I will conclude there. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna ask, um, I'm gonna make a statement that I in fact uh am continuing the hearing. Um, this this hearing which will also incorporate uh the newly noticed uh waiver applications in plural uh until one o'clock uh on July eleventh. Uh, we will consider uh all of the applications at that point in time. Uh, I am not, uh, because I haven't received a formal request and I I'm not sure I can do it anyway. I'm not gonna limit the the scope of the testimony for that particular hearing, except that it must be relevant to to the uh the applications. So that I'm I'm formally doing. The second thing is that I'm gonna ask basically um permission. Um, and so that that permission is that I would agree to do a site visit. I will give you roughly the time or date, the week that I will do it, uh, because I'm going to be in and around Bend uh that week. But I would anticipate uh doing a site visit on the sixth, seventh or eighth of July. The permission that I'm seeking is that, uh, and the only reason I'm asking this is Mister Hanson's first case with me or my first case with him uh and involved a a situation where um I actually was aware and folks were aware of the specific date, time uh that I was gonna be doing a site visit and they actually gave me uh instructions as to what to look for. I don't think I need that in this particular case. But I I do not want a procedural objection uh from anyone uh that I've done a site visit. And I've done it independently without applicant, staff or or opposition. Uh, but I would agree to drive uh the road, make my observations and then in one or two paragraphs, describe my observations. Um, but I want to make sure nobody objects to me doing that. And so first I'm gonna talk to Mister Hanson. You have any problems that I do an independent site visit?
No, absolutely not. That sounds acceptable.
Okay, Miss Mister Kovak.
Well, you know, uh, if it weren't for the the uh comments you received uh a minute ago, I I I wouldn't. But but I I actually have some concern that the context for your site visit now is within formal comments made by city staff people that I think were designed to influence your site visit. Uh, and I I think it's unfair to the applicant to have you go now after you've been given kind of a roadmap of how critical these issues are that you examine uh with respect to this fire danger. So um I had staff not done that, uh, I probably wouldn't be that concerned, but uh with with that and that was a statement that was made before the hearing uh on Bachelor V one as well. Uh, and I think it shows somewhat of a of a biased view of this application uh and and uh it it's it was designed to influence your psychism. So I I I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, your comments are so noted. Um, does anyone else in the audience have an objection that I do an independent site visit? If this, if so, please raise your hand. And the only way, reason you need to raise your hand is if you don't want me to do an independent site visit. Anybody's right hand raised?
No one's hand is raised.
All right, um, and due respect to Mister um Kovak's comment, uh I I'm good, my my response is uh that I don't know how many cases I've had with Mister Kovak and it disappoints me that he thinks that that I'm gonna be influenced by things that are non-related to relevant approval criteria and in some way, shape of bias or or prejudice my decision. Uh, I am going to do an independent site view visit uh either the sixth, seventh or eighth of July. Uh, I will tell you right now. I will tell you right now, the the extent and scope of that visit will be to turn off Century Drive, drive along Batch Review Road until a point in time that I believe I'm beyond, at least maybe 100 or 200 yards beyond where this particular subject property is, to get a feel for the area in the context of elevation, in the context of tree location, in the context of curb, of road, and in the context of the site, or site application, or the subject application in this particular case. It it, as I said, it disappoints me that Mr. Kovak would would be concerned that I that I couldn't limit myself in the site view to to simply staying on, staying with relevant evidence related to relevant approval criteria.
Just as I'd like to respond to that, because it was not intended as any kind of a that's comment about your ability, because you know, I've worked with you for many, many years. I thought it was a little bit inappropriate that staff didn't limit the request to saying you should make a site visit to evaluate the site. I was concerned that staff was trying to interject what I thought was inappropriate comment into the process, and and I can, I I think you can appreciate from our standpoint why we would have that concern.
I understand your concern, Mr. Kovak, but my my disappointment remains. Let 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 me also make a disclosure, I I really never thought it was relevant to to this case, but with respect to the Aubrey Bute fire, I was hearings officer for a significant Deschutes County decision approving a comprehensive plan amendment, a goal amendment or amendments on the east side, certainly subject to, and the issue of the Aubrey Bute fire came up in that particular case. It was brought most significantly to my attention by an 8x10, reminds me of Alice's Restaurant, the the song, but it definitely had the 8x10 glossy photo of looking east from the subject property in that particular case, and it was, it was but as in that particular case, it was relevant. In this particular case, the issue regarding fire danger was incorporated into my batch review one decision to the extent that I felt relevant, and I will do the same in batch review two. So with that, then, I'm going to close this portion of the public oral
Hearings Officer Frank?
Yes. Mr. Kine?
Hearings Officer Frank, before you do that, sir, this is Larry Kine.
I'm listening.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, as that is a a private access, okay, thank you. As that is a private access, I would like to give you an invitation to come into that property as I have authorization to do that. That's not a public access. And I don't know if you need that or not, but I'd like to offer that to you so that you don't have any reservations on driving up that private access.
You know, I actually appreciate that.
A bachelor view.
That is something that, in in the heat of the moment, is something that I I hadn't really not thought of, so I appreciate that, and I'm assuming there's no lock gate on this.
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay, all right, then we're gonna close the here, the oral portion of the public hearing for June 15. We will reconvene the public hearing on via Zoom on the 11th of July at 1:00 PM. As I indicated, I will be doing a very short, but but independent site view on the 6th, 7th, or 8th of July. And if there, in fact, are any changes that require a further continuance, I'm asking that the applicant and the staff jointly make a request for a future continued hearing date. With that, we're gonna close the hearing. Thank you so much for all participating.
Thank you.
And the meeting.